Am I on? We're just waiting for the city attorney. Okay. Oh, where did he go? Well, I could just say welcome to everyone. We have a big crowd tonight. Thanks for coming and being involved in our community process of our meeting. We have three discussion items tonight, which will be kind of interesting. So, welcome and welcome all the Rancho Buena Vista students, I think, out there that are here to look at our meetings and see what's going on in the community. And the first thing we'll do is call meeting to order, and I'll have a roll call by our deputy city manager, Ally Zimmerman. Just a minute, mic trouble here.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
Okay, okay. We're gonna have the flag salute tonight by Tony Viscor and the Boy Scouts of America, Den Five, PAC 751. So, welcome, and they're gonna do the flag salute for us. So, everybody rise.
Cub Scout salute. Prepare to post the colors. Post the colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color Guard about face. Color Guard retreat.
Mayor Ritter, council members, on behalf of the Weeboos One Bats of PAC 751, I would like to thank you all for allowing us to attend a council meeting here tonight and for allowing us to participate in the flag ceremonies. So, thank you very much. I would also like to, at this time, congratulate these fine young scouts for the great job they just performed. They represent a reflection in the true meaning of doing a good deed and being a good citizen. They serve as great role models for our youth and for the future of our country. I would like to thank all the city officials and all the community service members for doing their duty of service, for risking their lives each day for our protection and for keeping us all safe. As our great country and as the rest of the world struggles to find the answers to get out of these tough economic times of hardship, let us all pray for a quick and prosperous recovery for all of global economics. Let us also pray for all the worldwide countries that live in poverty and whose citizens, both young and old, suffer every day from hunger, disease, and preventable illnesses. Let us pray for all the safety of all the men and women, your sons and daughters who are in the military and who risk their lives each and every day, both here and abroad, so that we may all continue to live in a country where there is freedom and independence for all. Let us pray for their safe return home and for worldwide peace. May God bless us all. Amen.
Amen.
Now, normally, Mayor Ritter, under normal conditions, the colors would normally remain posted as they are, but until the end of the meeting. But since we will not be staying here for the entire meeting tonight, we would now like to perform the retrieval of the colors ceremony, if we may.
Color Guard halt. Scout salute. Color Guard retrieve the colors. Color Guard about face. Color Guard retreat.
Thank you all very much.
So, thank you to the Boy Scout, Den Five, PAC 751. Thank you so much. The next thing is approve the agenda by our city manager, Rita Geldert.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no deletions from the agenda, and there was an addition for the item C3, which was an amendment to the exhibit and an attachment. And I believe that that might have been passed out at the last minute, but wasn't mentioned on the agenda, and it was a correction of the total values on the, on item C3, which was an additional $18,000. So, that's an amendment to item C3. All the rest is in order.
Okay, thank you. We have one presentation today, which is a proclamation declaring Wednesday, October 5th, 2011, Walk and Bike to School Day in the City of Vista, and Mayor Protem John Aguilera is going to read that for you.
Whereas International Walk and Bike to School Day is Wednesday, October 5th, 2011, and whereas Walk and Bike to School Day is an event that increases the number of children safely walking and biking to school while raising awareness of the health and environmental benefits of walking and biking. And whereas a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, and walking or bicycling to school offers an opportunity to build activity into daily routine and commute behaviors. Whereas Sandag is committed to promoting and implementing Safe Roots to School education and encouragement programs, and whereas the City of Vista supports the Safe Roots to Schools program, several recent sidewalk projects near local schools, including Grapevine Elementary, California Avenue Elementary, Olive Elementary, and Washington Middle School, were partially funded by the Safe Roots to School Grant Program. And whereas reducing traffic congestion around school zones improves safety and the environment by decreasing vehicle emissions, including greenhouse gases. Now, therefore, the mayor and the members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 5th, 2011, to be Walk and Bike to School Day in the City of Vista, encouraging walkable communities, safer school zones, and cleaner air through healthy transportation choices to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Aguilera. The next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar, and there are items C1 through C5. In our consent calendar, all the items are enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar, and any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak or to the secretary or the clerk over there, or a member of the council can remove an item. So, I would look for a motion on the consent calendar, or I have one person that wants C3 removed. So, we're gonna pull out C3 and then?
C5.
C5? Okay. Mayor Protem Aguilar pulled out C5. Anyone else?
I have to excuse myself from the five.
Then you're gonna excuse yourself on C5. Okay. Okay, so then I would look for a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for the balance.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Okay, that motion passes. Do you wanna stay for three, C3? Well, we're gonna do C3 first. We're gonna do C3 first. Stay for that one. Okay, we're gonna do, the first one is C3, which is amended enforceable obligation payment schedule. So, do you want to listen to a speaker first, or do you want?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. It would be Chuck Raybo, please.
Mayor, Council, Chuck Raybo. At 3:41 this evening, I got an email from the clerk about the changes to C3, D2, and D3. Yesterday, late yesterday, I got a note from the clerk that the CVBID was modified. And I don't think you're getting served well, even though we pay well, with these last-minute to-dos, and it's not in keeping with the spirit of the Brown Act. Thank you.
Does anybody else have a comment? Councilmember Gronky?
I'll go ahead and make a motion for this item.
I'll second.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, I would look for a vote. Councilmember Coles seconded it. Okay, that motion passes. So, the next item that we're gonna be looking at is C5, which is the Paseo Santa Fe Infrastructure Design Contract. So, Councilmember Lopez is excused on this one, and Mayor Protem Aguilar, do you want to?
Yeah, my question, just, there was a couple of sentences that caught my eye about the code section 3.0806B4. Anyways, it says, "In the event there's only one individual or firm that can provide or is especially suited to providing the required professional services in a timely manner, the purchasing officer may waive the requirements for solicitation of multiple proposals." And I just find it hard to believe that there's only one individual or one firm that could handle this project, so I'm just wondering why we didn't go out to bid for this, and can we go out to bid for this?
I'll start out, Mayor Protem, and then Mr. Meyer and Mr. Zimmerman can add to that. It's, our understanding is that when Mr. Walker, Torrey Walker, was starting out with the project, it was, the Bucola Engineering was a sub for Torrey in this process. Once we went through several iterations of the design contract, is that we were pretty far along with these experts that we felt very comfortable with. And yes, there are other people, but as far as that we could go out, but we would also have to start over in a certain fashion with, and we thought that the continuity of keeping these, this contract in place and going on with the next phases of the project and extending the project would be in the best interest of the city. So, but there are other people that could contract. What we were saying is that as far as the expertise in the design, and if there's more to add to that, Mr. Meyer, please feel free to do so.
I, yeah, sure. I would just like to add that Bucola Engineering was also performed some work for the CDC directly related to this project under a very small contract. So, in addition to the work that they performed as a sub on the Torrey Walker contract, they've also done some work directly for the commission, which is directly applicable to this project.
I guess I'm not questioning their ability to do the work. I mean, you obviously have the confidence in them. I just feel like we're talking about three-quarters of a million dollars. We've had some budget issues in the past, and I know redevelopment is under pressure now from the state. We don't know where that's gonna go. I just think it would be prudent for us to maybe send that out, particularly in this environment, where so many contractors would be willing to bid on it, and we might be able to get a better price. I mean, we're talking $727,000. If we could save $50,000 or $70,000, it would be significant. That's my opinion. I'd like to find out if anybody else has that same opinion.
Councilmember Gronky?
Yes. What's the actual total of this particular contract?
$727,500.
This piece of it or the entirety?
That's, this entire contract, the design work, the technical back administration, and the construction drawings.
Okay. And so, right now, we are in the midst of waiting on a decision from the state about redevelopment in general.
That is correct.
Okay. If we were to continue to pursue this contract on Paseo Santa Fe, it moves us that much closer to getting that project done.
That is correct.
If redevelopment doesn't go through and the state discontinues it, will this project then die, or are there opportunities for us to continue with portions of this project?
If the, if AB 26 and AB 27 are upheld and we opt back in, then we have the bond proceeds from 2011, from June 2011, that we will be able to spend towards the improvement of the Paseo Santa Fe project.
So, we would be able to do a portion of the total?
Correct.
Infrastructure would be in place or no?
The Paseo Santa Fe project primarily is an infrastructure. It's the relocation of the street, the relocation of the storm drain, and the streetscape improvements, which would be the curb, the gutter, the sidewalk, and the street furniture and landscaping. The $14 million will not be enough to do all of that work in addition to the land acquisitions that's necessary to support the relocation of the street. It should be enough to do a Phase One, and that will be an option as we move forward with the design contract we will be looking at.
So, if we were to continue with our, this action tonight and approve the $727,000, we would be at that stage that we could start construction? We could go out to bid?
At the end of this, at the end of this contract, we would be in a position to go out to bid.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Coles.
What would be, what kind of a delay would it cause to try to relet and get other quotes on this project?
That would probably be a 60- to 90-day process.
And then, in so doing, the Bucola has, as you said, been doing a lot of preliminary work leading up to this next phase. Would a new company have costs that would, they would incur to bring them up to speed in terms of coming to do this project?
I would think so, yes.
And you're in, I mean, you, I'm sure, get feedback from firms who would like to do business with us. Is your flavor or is your instinct that we could, in fact, save substantial money by going out, or is it sort of a wash by the time they have to do the work to get up to speed? What's your sense of that, of the potential for savings versus loss of time?
Well, in reviewing this contract proposal with Bucola and his team, we're fairly confident that it is a reasonable cost associated with the work. We negotiated it, and we looked at it. So, I'm reluctant to say that there's a potential for substantial, moderate, or minimal savings.
Did, did we hire them originally because they did give us a competitive quote?
They were hired as a subcontractor of Torrey Walker, is my understanding, and to continue on to take us to the next phase and looking at the detention basin. And then, as everything, don't mean a pun in here, but flowed together between the detention basin and the infrastructure for all of Paseo Santa Fe, it needed to carry on through the rest of the project. What was evaluated, certainly were the terms and conditions going forward for Mr. Walker's contract. And since this one would also include the construction drawings included in there, which are a substantial portion of it, to be able to go out to bid, the $461,500 is construction drawings, that was, you know, a key factor in determination. It really was that to keep the project moving and, and between planning, community development, engineering, and redevelopment, all of them looked at it and looked around it, is that, going out to bid would take a lot more time, and they felt that the expertise that was here would provide stability and continuity to keep the project rolling. Didn't feel that it was, that they were going to get something much more competitive, and this isn't typical. We, if we only have one bidder, we list that we only have one bidder, and this isn't something that we've typically done. But in this, for the sake of this project, we felt that it was important to continue on with this contractor.
Are there any other questions? My only question is, does this, would this action, if we delayed it, would that delay the detention basin in any way, or is that a separate, a whole separate thing?
That's a separate contract.
Even though it runs, kinda runs together? Okay. Okay, so let's say I have, Councilmember Coles, are you again?
Well, I'm still in a bit of a...
Okay, then, Mayor Protem Aguilar, are you next then?
Yeah, I had a question. I was just wondering what Mr. Piper, as far as the way you read that code, I wouldn't even, till I saw that code. How do you interpret that?
The, it's consistent with the way that we've always interpreted in the, in the context of this type of an issue, in that it complies with the requirements of the, of the Vista Municipal Code. Municipal Code.
Well, I, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention because it's certainly, I think, our duty to make sure that we're good stewards of, of the money that we have. Do you have, do you have any basis to think that we might do better by going, going out? Or is it, is it the sense of the climate right now because engineering firms are all hungry for work?
Yeah, no, I had received two different calls on this that said they could do better. But I mean, you know, they haven't bid on it, so we don't know.
So what would, what would, what would happen if we decided, let's, let's get a quote, let's make sure we're getting the best bang for our buck? What, what staff's feeling about that? Would you think that this might be a prudent thing to do or?
Well, I, I think as the city manager indicated, at the staff level, the various departments felt that this was a fair contract, and we were confident in the work that the team did.
Councilmember Gronky, did you have a question?
Question of, of legal counsel. I had a question about this, and I asked the city manager. I know part of the litigation with the state restricts us going into additional contracts under redevelopment association, and so we have an opportunity to maintain this particular agency because we have a contract with them already. Would that limit us another opportunity to go to, to contract with someone else?
The contract in this case is actually not with the redevelopment, it's with the city. And that's the reason that we can enter into the contract is because the city's entering into the contract, not, not the CDC. The funding is based on funds that the CDC has transferred to the city for this purpose, and that are held in a separate fund. And that's the funding mechanism.
Those monies are already set aside then?
Those monies are set aside.
And how long would it take if we were to go to outside bid? Are we looking at a delay of several months?
Fifty, ninety days?
Two to three days, two to three months.
Sixty to ninety days.
What's your, what's your pleasure?
Well, I think you know where I stand. I can't support it.
Yeah, you know, I can say that I sit on another board, and engineering's costs were at some number, and the actual number that came in from the bid was half of that. So this is definitely a time to look at other opportunities. So if you say, let's use a little caution, then I agree with that.
Let's hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to, or I guess, direction? Give direction to staff that we go put this out to bid, and, you know, obviously in a quick manner, and just try to get the best price out there. And I mean, you know, we'll take a look and make a decision based on, I mean, if we're going to save just a few bucks, I'm all for leaving it with the same company. But I think if we're going to save significant monies, I think that would be the best for the taxpayers.
Very good.
We'll get that out to bid as soon as possible if that's the consensus. Councilmember Coles?
Yeah, and I agree with what Councilman Aguilera said. If it, it's good to test the waters. I, I would like to stay with the same company, provided they can be within, you know, the range of the, the competitive market out there, even if it's a little bit more. But like, I mean, if we could save fifty, eighty, a hundred thousand dollars, you know, it's, that's significant. So I, I would, I would support Councilman Aguilera's motion.
Do I have a second?
That's a second.
Do I have a second? Okay. Motion and a second? So I guess I'm ready to vote. I'll support that also. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Can you all hear in the back okay? No, you can't. Yes and no. I'm seeing yeses and nos. So just all of our councilmembers talk right in there and talk loud. The next item, where did Mr. Gronky go? Oh, okay. Our next item, discussion item, it's the Central Vista Business, just. Frank can't vote on this next one. I don't know where. Frank, you can't vote on this next one. But where did Councilmember Gronky go? Everybody, people keep coming and going today. Okay, the next item is D one, it's the Central Vista Business Improvement District, CVBID Administration. So are we going to have a report first? A little summary of things?
Mr. Hamm will provide the report to begin with. It's a brief presentation.
They said they don't need a report.
They don't need a report. All righty then.
Are you sure?
Okay.
Well, maybe let's have a brief little report to bring us up to speed where we are. Okay. Mr. Hamm?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I am Kevin Hamm. I'm the Director of Economic Development for the city, and with me is Rachel Bell. She's the Economic Development Specialist for our department, and she'll be giving the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight we come before you to confirm your previous actions relating to the Central Vista Business Improvement District, the CVBID Advisory Board. On August twenty-third, staff presented the city council with several options for management of the CVBID. At that meeting, the city council indicated by consensus a desire to amend the makeup of the CVBID Advisory Board, as outlined in option one and presented at that meeting. Tonight, for your consideration, is an ordinance which alters the Vista Municipal Code Section three point five two outlining the makeup of the advisory board. The new composition of the advisory board will be four council-appointed members who are owners of businesses subject to the assessments within the district unless otherwise qualified candidates are unavailable. The council will also appoint three Vista Village Business Association, VVBA, board members, who are owners of a business subject to the assessment within the district and who have been recommended by the VVBA board. After the approval of this item, staff will advertise for the vacant CVBID Advisory Board positions, schedule candidate interviews, and create the duties list. The appointments will expire on June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. There's no direct fiscal impact associated with this staff recommendation. However, if the city council approves this item, staff will prepare an agreement with the VVBA for administration of the CVBID for approval, for approval by the city council. The agreement provides a forty thousand dollar grant and allocates the annual CVBID revenues to the VVBA for expenditures relating to the CVBID annual work plan as authorized by the advisory board. The forty thousand dollar grant is budgeted in the Economic Development Department and is two-thirds funded by redevelopment. Due to recent state impacts on redevelopment funds, the grant will now need to be sourced entirely from the general fund. If council approves the recommendation tonight, confirmation of the CVBID Advisory Board, delineation of their duties, and approval of the agreement with the VVBA to administer the CVBID will be presented to council on November eighth. This concludes my report. VVBA representatives, Kevin Hamm and I are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to hear the speakers first? I have three, three speakers here.
Sure.
Okay, we'll start with the speakers. So first is Frank Lopez. Where'd he go? Frank? He's out there pacing in the back. Okay, while we're waiting for Frank, we'll do Gamaro. Is Gamaro here? Oh, yeah. We'll start with you. Gamaro followed by Chuck Rabel, and then we'll get Frank.
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Gumaro Scarsaga. I'm a contractor employee for the Vista Village Business Association located at one fifty East Broadway. This long process affecting the organization's financials, and how is, this is also hindering the VVBA's goals. The VVBA has managed and operated for over six months without CVBID funds or CD grants. Our past events has created cash flow that has helped us maintain our doors open from April two thousand eleven to October two thousand eleven, and our funds are now running low. We are now into the third month of our fiscal year, and we need this contract finalized today in order to meet our goals for our bid members. We have a few projects pending based on your decision today. For example, we have a facade improvement program application pending. We have, we would like to install lights on, and on, lights on trees on Main Street, and we also want to bring back the tree lighting event so we can give, but we believe that goodwill to the community of Vista is important. If council moves forward with the option one, we, we won't be able to accomplish our goals unless a forty thousand dollar CD grant is given to the VVBA immediately. Thank you for your time, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Gamaro will come back so we can do questions after the other speakers.
You'll be, you'll be here so you can ask the questions if we have any after the other speakers? Okay. Okay, Frank, I'll take you next, and then after Frank, Chuck Rabel.
Good evening, council. My name is Frank Lopez. I'm a resident here on South Santa Fe in Vista, seven twenty-one. The VVBA has come a long way in the last six, seven months, and I, I think it's, it's a shame that this thing has drug out as long as it has, you know, as far as making this decision, when we're talking about forty thousand dollars. And it's, it's, it's an organization that has brought a lot of business to the downtown area. It, they've had their problems, they've had their ups and downs, and I think at this point, they have one of the best, uh, 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 to go, senior moment, boards that they've ever had. Because you have people there who are dedicated to the VVBA and who are business people and who understand finances. And apparently, a while back, there was problems, and those problems are solved, they're solved today. I know that the city also was, is, is part of it and should be checking these things as we go. But I think that the city was asleep the last couple of years on this. And I think that, that things are on the right track now. I think the, the city's watching, they're making them do a check register, they're making them do a monthly report with the president. There's a lot of things that they've implemented that here lately that, that will help the council make decisions for the future and tonight. So when you look at, at the forty thousand, I have heard that they've spent, for the last ten years, spent forty thousand dollars. That forty thousand dollars is four hundred thousand dollars. They have brought, that whole downtown has brought a tremendous amount of dollars to our downtown, and that's what we need. You have an organization right now that's, that's there, working very hard, at no cost. They're volunteering their time and their knowledge. Tonight, you're going to be voting on the different ones. I, as a councilman, I as a, as a, as a property owner, believe that they're in the right direction, and I believe that they should be going on item number four. And leave it that. If, if you don't think it's, it's going to work out, do it next year. Give them a chance. They've only been there six months. Give them a chance to prove to you that they have the knowledge and, and the unity that they have to go forward and, and make a difference in our community. They are giving their time and working with downtown businesses, and that's how we, the city, make our money. So please, vote on number four tonight and help them out tonight, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Chuck Rabel.
Good evening again. This subject was up in August twenty-third meeting for discussion. At that time, I pointed out that there were thirty-two actions that were reported going back to oh-two, all of which were consensus. The exception to one, I think Mr. Aguilera said he didn't vote that way back in March. The, the budget you worked up and approved the third week in June, it included this money for the VVBA. Like the previous speaker says, they, they've got a good working board now, and lots of energy, lots of want to get things done, and more times than not, the, the problem's here, okay? Right there. It's, they've been micromanaged all this time. If there was a problem, let's put it on staff to, to get it fixed. Also, the original report came out Thursday last week, and on four fifty on the twenty-sixth, we got a revised report. And I can't blame it on the Vista Village Association, Business Association. Let's support these folks, please. With that, I'll close. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Well, anybody? Okay, Councilmember Coles, followed by Councilmember Gronky.
I think, I, I made it pretty clear at the, at the last meeting that I support the forty thousand dollar grant going forward, and I think we should expedite that as soon as possible because they, they need to keep moving in the direction they're going. I think this is all public money, the, the money they receive from fees as well as the money that we give to them, and I want to have careful public oversight, which is a part of the advisory committee that, that at least three of us agreed that we wanted to see in place. So I, my position is to go ahead with, with option one, with the forty thousand dollar grant to the VVBA.
Was that a motion?
I, if people want to, I, I'll make that as a motion, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Gronky?
I'm not prepared to second that motion just yet. I have some questions of the VVBA. So if we could have somebody come up that represents the VVBA? In the meantime, there was something said about staff. I was to understand that part of the budgetary problems that this organization had was brought out by staff, and, and you made them aware of it. I don't know if that's true, that history.
Yes, in December, at the end of the year, we noted to staff at the Vista Village Business Association that their revenues were not sufficient to carry out their operations through the year. Staff in presenting the financials to the board and discussions, that was not brought out, and we raised the issue with the president of the organization, John Aleesi, at which time the board started to take action.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that clarification. The other thing was is that it was just said by a speaker that this, this VVBA's been around for six months with this new board. How long has this VVBA been around?
The Vista Village Business Association started out life as the Vista Town Center Association, and the mayor, I believe, was one of the first board members.
I was, but I don't remember what year it was.
I think it was nineteen ninety-five. I think it might have been. Yes, nineteen ninety-five.
Well, no, that's the bid.
Yeah.
The bid has been since nineteen ninety-five.
Yeah. I think it was eighteen ninety, the year that we started.
I want to say nineteen ninety-one or two.
We could check into that and get back.
Maybe even longer than that.
But the bid, the bid has been, only, the bid has been only functioning for about ten years as collecting dues. So, but, but the Vista Town Site Committee or Downtown Committee, that's been around at least about twenty years, about twenty, twenty-some years.
I don't know.
You know, I, I sat down with members of, of the VVBA, and I want to thank you again for that opportunity, and asked at time, I, I asked them, what are you going to do for the city over the next year? And can you, can you put some measurable criteria down and then come back to us over the course of the year? So I was given a document, and I'd like to speak from that document and ask you questions off. So are you familiar with this?
I am familiar with the document. I only have it with me, but I'm familiar with it.
Okay. The first thing I'm going to say, and, and I hope you take this with the, with the kindness of hearts, but you're a professional organization.
Correct.
Please proofread something before you distribute it. I'll just leave it at that. Let's go to your first committee, which is Organizational Committee.
Okay.
And it says here that something that's going to be accomplished over this time over the next year, the third bullet says bid members and business rosters will be identified by zones. Is that not something you have already?
We do, but it's not accurate. We actually want to revisit that bid membership and go actually visit the member and see who's there, actually get the updated context, because in the past, we also receive, we mail out newsletters or any information, and we get some in return.
mailed out newsletters or any information and we get some in return. So we want to update that membership and then we'll give that information to the city so they can update their records too.
Okay, and then, and that goes also with the Community Pride, the first bullet there says create worksheets, worksheets that track and monitor all contributions. Again, it seems to be something that should be in place already.
It is. We have an in-kind contribution sheets, we have donation sheets already established as a VVBA that was actually implemented back in, I believe in May, was adopted by the board.
Okay, okay. As I go on to the, the latter part of that same committee, under committee, Identity and Pride, support committees with creation, creation of focal point for Community Identity Pride. I, I don't know what that means. I mean, it, it hardly seems measurable. I don't know if that's something that's measurable.
Well, that's kind of like an ongoing goal. We want to create pride in the downtown. We want to, you know, we want to make sure that the businesses give, give the value that they deserve as well. So that's our focus point to make sure that they have the pride so they can get involved more with the VVBA and continue with our goals.
So basically it's an outreach program that you're going to do over the course of the year to try to, people realize exactly what you're accomplishing for them.
Exactly, and our board is actually taking initiative on this project too, so.
Okay. Let's go on to the next one, which is the Design Committee, the one that talks about tree lighting and so forth. I think that's very good. The second one about the historical signs, if, if I heard right from staff, I thought that was something we're doing already and I didn't know why the VVBA put that down if it was something that the city was doing already.
Well, actually, the Design Committee Chair is now the Historical Society President, I believe, is Janice Claffin and she's actually taking action on that and we're supporting the, the, the project itself. So whatever we can do to help them, they will go ahead and do that.
So you imagine there'll be signs downtown then?
Oh, yeah. We imagine a few on Main Street and South Santa Fe, I believe.
Okay, as I go through this then, I guess the question is, you'll be coming back on a quarterly basis with saying how you, where you're at in accomplishing these goals that you set for town?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we're meeting with the Financial Advisory Committee in a couple of weeks to go over our finances and see where we are on our goals as well and then we'll be making sure that the board is identif, and notified immediately, immediately to make sure where we are on our goals. So we should definitely move forward and if we get the grant now, we can definitely complete these goals by the end of June there.
Okay. Well, let me ask that question of staff then. If we were to vote for, for position one, could, could monies be made available to them immediately as that committee is being formed or we have to wait till the committee is formed?
Well, the way the budget, the item, the monies are listed in the budget is that it's a matching grant or grant funds to go along with the CVB ID. So the council could make them available earlier, but it would have to be in connection with the CVB ID.
Additionally, is, is that if the goal of the council, depending on what you do, is if you're going with the discussion and recommendation from the last council meeting, is, is that you would appoint a board and you would want to have them, you would be post haste, you'd need to advertise and appoint that board and have them review the disbursement of those funds all within a short period of time so that those board members would, otherwise if you award the money and it, and it's spent, which it sounds like they do need the money, then you appoint the board and then what do they review?
I'm understand from what I've heard from the VVBA members that if we were to wait for that timeline, they might be a little bit behind the curve when it comes to some obligations you might have.
Well, we have contracts pending right now. We have event contractors pending, potential future events, contracts pending, the gain facade improvements pending, so everything we're doing right now is pending on these funds.
Okay. Let's finish up with the document. Let's see. You, you, you sound like you're on your way to getting another beautification of a downtown or dressing up another building. As I look under Future Projects for Design, you've done the one with the one day shoe repair, but the second bullet says you're currently a potential at 344 Main Street.
That's correct and that's in front of Duro Paint, I don't know if you're familiar with that building. It's next to the, it's in the Eucalyptus, I mean, we call this, I can't remember the name of it.
Citrus.
Right in front of Vista Village Cafe.
Citrus.
Yeah.
Is it Citrus?
Citrus and Main Street and actually we'll be contacting them once we receive these funds.
Let me, let me ask you, let's go on to the Promotions Committee and the C there, two Cs says Quarterly VVBA Business Group Newspaper Ad. Is this envision you're going to have your own newsletter with ads in it highlighting people within the, the community or is this is North County Times promoting VVBA? Okay, the latter.
North County Times, yeah. It's like the business journal the Chamber of Commerce have and we're trying to cover some of the costs for the bid members, so it'll be cheaper on their end.
Okay. This is just, just a personal note about the Strawberry Festival. I really see that as an upcoming event for, for Vista and, and what your, what your goals here are almost status quo and I, I would hope there'd be more substance to that for the future.
I agree with you.
Just a, just a note. And then lastly, the new downtown farmer's market. I've talked, I, I know and I have talked to Mr. Wall about this and it's not his intentions to have a agricultural farmer's type market and, and you're aware of that, so I guess the, the naming of this needs to be renamed and, and so people aren't confused on what the future market might look like.
Definitely. We've talked to Mark Wall and actually we are going through the process right now, looking at reviewing if it's feasible for the downtown and also branding it with the name, not Farmer's Market. So that's kind of, we're, we're still negotiating on that.
Okay, okay. I, I have a tendency to agree with Mr. Coles that we need to have some kind of oversight of the group and, and this is not meant as a personal note on anybody on the organization, but we have seen this organization go up and down over time and, and you are, at this present moment, in one of the worst conditions you've been in and I'm saying you're, you're coming, coming out of it. But I, I guess I want to hear from my other council member or two before I make a final decision on that. I'm sorry, there's one other thing I want to bring up and I, I hope you don't mind. On the last page, which is the admission statement of the Economic Restructuring Committee, I don't see this as economic restructuring goals, honestly, but, but even so, I, I think you're misguided in, in trying to do a skateboard park survey when you have these, these young interns here that could very well do your survey of your entire VVBA region and find out what services need to be provided. I, that's just a, I, I really don't see why the VVBA is involved in the skate park at all. Maybe you can tell me why.
Well, in the past, they have told us that they were looking at the downtown to create a skate park. This is a few months ago. Just recently, we were told that that's not the case anymore, so we're actually revisiting this, this item and, and taking action after that.
Oh, I, I don't think it was ever the intention of this council to put a skateboard park downtown. I don't, maybe.
Skateboard Coalition approached us to kind of help them.
I wasn't aware of that. Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Mayor Prota Maguilera.
Yes, so is my understanding tonight that you do need the funds? Yes. Okay. Because I was approached by your former president and your current president and they had talked to me about how they started in February with $200 or something like that, is that right?
Correct.
And now they've got X amount of dollars in the bank and it sounded very good. Where's that money?
It's, remember, we've been operating for seven months, so overhead keeps coming, we cannot stop payments. So it has been managing slowly throughout the months. I mean, this is our seventh month in October, after October, we'll pretty much be out of money. So we're okay until November 1st, actually. And that's paying the overhead that we have, which is the rent, utility costs, contractor fees and so on.
Yeah, because it was presented to me like, you know, they turned $200 into $20,000 or whatever it was in the bank and, you know, we should have confidence in them and, and, you know, all the more reason to, I guess, invest in the VVBA, but I'm hearing a different story tonight, so. At that time, my comment to them was, well, jeez, if you're making great money, why not, why do you need us?
The money goes so far only, we cannot go throughout the whole fiscal year and fortunately, that's where we are right now and we have nothing pending on to generate funds right now.
Okay. So I understand that now and I guess that's probably, probably the concern that I have and I think the other council members have as well is that, I think my understanding was in the beginning, the grant was just something to kind of get things going for the organization and so that you could, could be self-sufficient and, you know, whenever it started, whether it was 85, 98 or 2005, I mean, we've been doing this for a long time and it's been established that we've at least been giving that grant for at least 10 years or more and that's a lot of money. It's all taxpayer money. And yes, it is in the budget, but just because it's in the budget doesn't mean that we aren't concerned about it and that we don't want to, or that we want to make sure that it's spent correctly and that's really what it comes down to. And I know you're kind of been thrown in the mix here and I think you're a great addition to, to the group, I really do. I've seen a lot of changes since you've joined the group, so I commend you on that, but I, I think that I have to support option one. We have to make a change at some point and that's something we can change down the road. But at this point, I'm supporting option one and I can second Councilman Coles' motion.
Okay, so I have motion in a second, but just before you go on, I just wanted to say, you know, you do have a good working group and they've been working really hard. If we gave you, what if we gave you like, can we give you $10,000 to get us rolling with our, you know, with, so before we can interview and put this board together, would that help?
Yes, it will. It will help tremendously, actually.
To, how, would that get you through December or not?
It will get us through December, but we're still a little tight because again, we have those contracts pending that we're coming in.
I mean, would that help you go with those contracts or would that not do that?
I'll say, I'll say 15,000 will get me through the contracts and everything.
15 would help you with your contracts too? Can we do that?
I like that.
Would you, are you obligated on the facade improvement agreements? Could you, you could hold off on those, but just do your events?
I could do that, but again, that's something that would create a value to our members, so I don't know if I can, you know, go back and see. They're, they're making the changes now, so they're applying for their permits and their.
You've already granted them, but you didn't have, without any money?
No, we haven't granted them at all.
Okay.
We just received one today and I just spoke with a couple more that they're interested in.
They're, they're interested, but they, you haven't processed them yet, so, so that way you could hold off on facade improvement grants and then, and then award those after.
Yeah, we can do that too, though.
Mr. Hamm?
Would you like to structure it as a loan under small agreement that we could provide that's reimbursable when the monies are awarded?
Sure. We could do that if the council wants to divide it up as such.
If that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, if that, will that work for you?
That would be fine, I mean.
Yeah, I, I would expand my motion to include that clarification and, and also to expedite the implementation of this advisory committee as soon as possible so that, so that we'll be on track for what we have intended to do here.
And would you help me interview the people, Councilmember Coles, so they can get that moving?
All right.
And I'll second that.
Okay, okay. So then, but I would just like to say, I, I took a little offense here when you said, you know, somebody said we're micromanaging and then the other one said, oh, the city was asleep, so how you can micromanage something and then be asleep and not have enough oversight? So I was taking a little offense, an offense of the city here, so, but, I mean, downtown is the wind of our city, really, and you want to keep it safe, you want to keep it, you know, there's nothing boarded up, you want to keep it looking good and it looks really good and the volunteers, you guys are all working very hard. So I very much support you and I will make sure that the board that we put together to, for the oversight will support you and you'll have three members on there and the other four members will be sure and interview and find somebody who's, who's positive and who supports you. So I'll give you my word that I, that I'll do that. So, and I don't think, for you guys, I don't, if you go through the main three street program and the four, the four points and everything, when you go through that program, they don't ever say, it's never self-sufficient, it's never been self-sufficient and never will be. It's kind of like the transit system out there, you know, you, you just have to put some money into somebody.
Don't listen to Judy right now. I also want to add that if you guys need us to help you guys do the outreach on some CVB ID members, just let us know, we'll send that information to them.
Okay, okay. So, okay, so then I guess we're all ready to vote? Okay.
Thank you for your time, guys.
The motion passes unanimously, so we'll be working on interviewing people very soon.
Here I had a clarification, so.
Oh, yes.
Your motion was for all three staff recommendations in addition to the loan that we'll structure, which is to modify the ordinance to put in.
Yes, that was the motion.
Yes, it was the motion.
With, with the applicants, it will be advertised tomorrow and the applicants will be interviewed by Councilman Coles and Mayor Ritter.
Okay, so let's, define my agenda here. Moving on to our next, our next item, which will be our General Plan 2030, it's West Sunset Island. We're going to discuss our general plan land use designation for that, for that area. So, and I think I have several speakers. Do you want to hear a report or do you want to hear the speakers first? What, report, speakers?
I have a report if you'd like to hear that.
Oh, well, well, you could give us a report then, Mr. Conley.
It's got pictures and everything. Thank you, John Conley, Community Development Director. I'm here to present to you tonight the West Sunset Island, which is hopefully the final land use decision that we'll have to make here before we can finalize our general plan update. Just to familiarize you all with the area, this is the unincorporated island that's surrounded by Vista and Oceanside on the west side of the city. Melrose Drive is located along the right side of the picture there that's east of this area and so this is all county lands that were never incorporated when Vista originally incorporated under county jurisdiction. It's within our sphere of influence, which means if it were going to annex and receive city services, it would come into Vista. The area that's within our sphere is about 270 acres and roughly about 150 parcels. In updating our land use and community identity element of our general plan, we have to map all the areas in the city and provide land use designations, including, including those areas within the sphere and that includes the Sunset Island, which is why we're here this evening. Annexations into the city are subject to the land use designations in the Vista general plan, so any decision that's made tonight affecting the land use would affect those properties when they annex into the city. This shows our current general plan land use map. It's fairly outdated, as you can see, which is part of the reason we're updating the plan, but I wanted to point out that the majority of the area is currently designated rural residential, which is one unit per acre and a portion on the northern end is low density, which is two units per acre. As part of the general plan update, staff has discussed several policy issues with the city council and the planning commission, both in visioning sessions in 2008 and in workshops that we held over a series of issues in 2009 and 2010. Early direction from the council was to preserve the semi-rural character of the outlying areas of the city, including the sphere of influence by retaining the rural residential land use designation in those areas, which is one dwelling unit per acre. And so the initial, or what I call the preliminary general plan update land use map that we prepared, shows the Sunset Island West area as rural residential, which is one dwelling unit per acre. This is what was initially internally reviewed by staff. About the time that map was prepared, we began hearing from a number of property owners in the Sunset Island area with a desire to increase the density. The county was updating their general plan at the time, they had agreed to provide a higher density designation in the county's plan. The city had some initial concerns over that because it was different from what our designation was and we hadn't had a lot of discussions with the county about that issue. But after investigating it more thoroughly, we determined that there is sewer service to provide higher density out there and so if the city is interested in doing that, we could go down that road. Following this, on October 5th of last year, we had a city council workshop where we discussed a number of items. One of them was the Sunset Island area and at that meeting, the city council directed staff to apply a medium low-density designation, which is five dwelling units per acre under our plan. Just to clarify, there's been some talk about four versus five dwelling units per acre. The medium low-density designation applies an R1 zoning designation, which is a 10,000 square foot minimum lot size. What that means is you could really only get about four units per acre in that designation. With a density bonus under state law, you could get more units and so it could allow up to five, but typically it's four. At the workshop in October that we had with the city council, when they provided that direction, we did not provide notification of all the property owners in this area, primarily because it was a workshop to discuss issues with the council. In the public review general plan update, which we later sent out, it was released in June, we showed the area as recommended by the city council back in October, which is medium low-density residential. That's the bright yellow color in the map. Just to note, the surrounding areas, I also included the residential designations in the corner of the map there. The surrounding areas in the city of Vista to the north and east are low-density, that's that pale yellow color and the gray area is rural residential, that's one unit per acre. And then up in the northwest corner is a medium density residential designation and that's primarily. and that's primarily the hillside development that's behind Costco that was built a few years ago, those are much smaller lots. This is what was in the public review draft. In July of this year, we decided to have a follow-up meeting to address a number of land use issues that had become quite controversial, including some circulation and land use issues. All of the property owners in this area were notified, and we discussed designations in both the east and west Sunset Island areas. The planning commission staff report included about 30 letters addressing the west Sunset Island land use designation. Of those, about 27 letters were provided in support, and three letters were provided in opposition. I did not double count letters that came from the same property, so this represents actual properties that agreed or disagreed. At the meeting, there were five speakers that supported changing the land use designations, a few of which indicated they were representing multiple property owners, and nine speakers that opposed increasing the density and requesting that it remain at one unit per acre. At the end of the meeting, the planning commission recommended a low-density designation, which is two units per acre or half-acre minimums. Just to go back to the map, that would mean that the bright yellow area that's in the Sunset Island area would be changed to the light yellow that you see along Melrose Way north of the map, would allow two units per acre. What this means to the city, it doesn't change the current county general plan or zoning in this area. If we change the land use designation, they enjoy the benefits the county provides them under their zoning until they annex into the city. The Vista general plan designation, though, would dictate what they were brought in as far as zoning if they annex. The environmental impacts associated with that growth, in terms of traffic, visual impacts, air quality, whatever other issues, would be evaluated at the time of the annexation. Sewer service would be necessary for smaller parcels if we were to create basically anything smaller than one acre, and there are potential fiscal impacts, so I'll cover those areas briefly. The county, the board of designations map, the area in the north of Ridge Road is designated for 4.3 is the county's designation, which is consistent with our medium-low-density designation. The area to the south of Ridge Road is designated VR2, which is two units per acre, that's consistent with our low density, so essentially they've split the density between these two planning areas. City staff would prefer, in terms of our general plan update, that we maintain one designation throughout the area for the purpose of consistency, because it's a similar land use throughout. As far as sewer service goes, I mentioned lots smaller than one acre would require service, and it would have, they'd have to annex in order to receive that service unless there were special circumstances, but new development typically doesn't qualify for that. As I mentioned, sewer capacity is available through an agreement with Oceanside. There are limited existing sewer lines, which I'll show, and the sewer main extensions to serve future development would be the responsibility of the property owners or future developers of those areas. The city is not intending to extend those lines into those areas. In addition, sewer service to some properties would require crossing private lots, so we would have to obtain easements potentially to do that. This graphic shows the sewer basins generally, the dotted line that separates them right at the, right at the small point there, is the separation between basins, meaning the basins to the east of that flow down into Oceanside, the basins to the west of that flow down into the Buena Vista Creek basin and are into the city of Vista sewer. The sewer lines that serve the area are shown in green. There were some extensions into the area to serve county-approved development, they occurred a long time ago. Lafco has essentially modified their policy since then, and the city can no longer provide sewer service to these areas unless they annex, unless, as I indicated, there are special circumstances. But the point of this graphic is to show that sewer service is available and can be built in these areas with the understanding that it would have to cross some private parcels. To discuss some fiscal impacts, when this issue first arose, we hired an outside consultant that runs a fiscal model for us to run an analysis of this area to determine what the fiscal impacts would be to the city if we annexed it at certain densities. So we evaluated three scenarios, four units to the acre, two units to the acre, and one unit to the acre. That's provided in exhibit two to your staff report. The property owner representative also prepared an analysis of the same issue, which is also included in exhibit, and I'll cover it in the next slide. What is really poignant about the fiscal impact analysis is that it's largely dependent upon the sales price of new homes that you build in those areas. It's easy to estimate for what the existing development patterns are, it's very difficult to estimate what it will be in the future, because no one knows what the price of a home is going to cost in five or 10 years. So the city looks at this as a tool to evaluate the magnitude of that impact to us, but the true fiscal impacts of an annexation will be determined at the time the annexation is requested, because it would be timely with the actual annexation into the city. This gives you a synopsis of the fiscal impact, and it shows the four, I'm sorry, the three scenarios that were evaluated, one, two, and four units per acre. The bottom one in blue was the one done by the applicant's representative, the property owner's representative, who's here tonight as well, and so I won't get into the details of it. What I want to show is that in the far column, it notes the net fiscal impact that's anticipated from the city annexing these areas. At one dwelling unit per acre, it results in a surplus of about $46,000 a year. At two units per acre, $74,000 per year. At four units per acre, it projects a deficit. This is largely based on the average home price that was used to evaluate what the city would incur from annexing these areas, and what the property owners representative point out is that that number isn't consistent with the prices used for the other densities at the time that it was taken, these were basically taken from the top of the market. The numbers would be very different today, but what I'm trying to show you is that depending on what you project your home sales will be in terms of price, you can affect what the city is going to incur. From the analyses that we've seen lately, it's somewhere between $450,000 to $500,000 for the cost of the house that would make or break the property tax amount that the city receives. The final issue I wanted to cover is community character. My belief is that if we're going to change a land use designation in an area, the community character is one of the things that's going to be principally impacted by that decision. So, I went out and I took some photos of what's out there today, and some photos of some new development at half-acre minimums or two units per acre, and some new development at four units per acre or 10,000-square-foot lots. This is the existing conditions, you can see by the photos, and I'm sure most of you have visited the area, there's a lot of rural uses, there's a number of agricultural uses, larger lot homes consistent with county outlying areas. The property owners have made the point that they are surrounded by suburban development, and that because of their unique and particular location in the city, surrounded by suburban areas in Oceanside and Vista, they should also be able to develop as a suburban area. The low-density designation of two units per acre, these are pictures of some new developments. In the upper left-hand corner is an area off San Clemente Avenue. This is a new development that's occurred in the last few years. The center picture is off of Grandview, Montamar, also off San Clemente, and I believe this is San Clemente as well. These are basically areas that have developed at half-acre in the last 10 years, where we see a typical type of grading and development that you'd see in this area. What's to note in the low-density designation areas is there is still a fair separation from, between homes. The homes are set back typically much further from the curb, and you typically have greater landscaping and slopes in these areas because of the larger lot sizes and the ability of the homes to fill up the lot. I can come back to these pictures if you like. These are homes at four units per the acre, these are 10,000-square-foot minimum lot sizes, and the projects in the upper right, I'm sorry, pardon me, in the upper right-hand corner is Centex Development, that's off Seeleita Linda, up off of Olive Avenue, that's being built right now. On the left side at the top is a project off of Grapevine that was built about five years ago. Below that is a project off of Ravine Road, up near Emerald, and between Emerald and Grapevine, that was built the last five years, and on the right is a project off of Sunset Drive that's west of Melrose that was built about 12 years ago. These are all 10,000-square-foot lots. The difference here is it's a more suburban look, the houses are closer to the street, they're closer together, you have wider streets, typically greater improvements in these areas because of the density. So the point I'm trying to make is that there was initial direction from the council to preserve the semi-rural character. Staff believes it's to preserve the semi-rural character, if that's what you intend to do, half-acre or greater-sized lots is what's required. If because of the unique location of this area in an area that's surrounded by suburban development, the council believes that it's appropriate to increase the density to four units per acre, that's okay, but I don't want to call it semi-rural, because I don't believe it is, it's suburban. So that's the distinction that I'm trying to make. So, that pretty much completes my presentation. We're looking for a recommendation this evening on one of the density designations that we've discussed, either rural residential, one unit per acre, low-density, two units per acre, or medium-low-density, five units per acre for this area. And following this direction, the staff will finalize the general plan and hopefully bring it back to you early next year for final approval. Thank you.
I have 18 speakers. Do you want to hear the speakers first? No, now I have 19. Is that a yes? You want to hear the speakers first?
Yes.
Okay, okay, speakers, I'm gonna, I'll call you, and then if you could keep it to three minutes, the light will be green, and then when it turns yellow, you have, oh, 30? 30 seconds left, and then when it turns red, stop, and maybe if you, everybody repeat yourselves, maybe you could, you know, tell us new things every time, that would be, that would be good, too. So, we're going to start, and I will, I'll start with Joseph Bowen, followed by Jeff, is it Stenler?
I own three acres of land south of the Ridge, of Ridge Road, which the county was doing at the two dwelling units per acre. I built there, I built my home, and I've lived there for 30 years. I can say from my old living there, it is not now and has not been for probably 10 years or more, really rural or even semi-rural. It is because there's nothing allowed to be put in there, but it's just a very small area. My primary concern is sewers. I personally know of two open, running, smelly, unhealthy, you know, probably something to a lawsuit someday, sewers that are failing. We have heavy clay soil, and it is really bad, and I mean, I don't turn anybody in, but it needs to be brought in. At the 5.5, at the two dwelling units per acre, no individual, no less developer even, could bring, could afford to bring the sewer in, and if you vote that, if you vote for that part now, it'll be 20 years of condemnation to unsanitary conditions. The wise thrust anymore right now for planning development is infill, using existing infrastructure rather than building.
You speak right, right in the mic, so people in the back can.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
That way the people in the back can hear you, too.
Okay, anyhow, the thrust is infill, whereas we don't new, build new roads, new schools, new fire departments, we have everything there, just, you know, the courthouse, I walked to it. We have shopping, there would be no impact in terms of new infrastructure. We're not Rancho Santa Fe. We don't, it costs money to maintain. I maintain three acres, cost me $1,000 a year just to do the weed abatement and fire prevention. There's no way I could afford to water my water bill this time, is, what was it, $330? One time, $440, and I don't maintain, I don't water all the three acres I have, I probably keep less, about a third of an acre, fairly decent, I've let the lawn die when the, when the drought was on. Quarter-acre lots are not small, they're relatively large. Developments like Shadow Ridge have eight or 10 per acre. Quarter-acre lots are nice. Am I out of time?
No, you got the yellow light.
Where is it?
You're getting there, it's right.
Oh, I see, okay, anyhow, I can't even build on three acres of land an additional bedroom, no less, another house because of the septic system.
Now you're red.
Oh, all right, well, anyhow, I just ask the council, don't condemn us to 20 more years of nothingness. I have three acres that I can do nothing at all with, but weed growing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff Stenler. I hope I said that right.
He did.
Okay, and then followed by Chuck Rabel.
Hi, my name is Jeff Stenler, I live at 1315 Ridge Road, I'm actually right across the street from Joe. I've been there for 16 years. I support the changes in zoning to four acres per unit. I don't personally have any plan to do anything with my house or my property. I would definitely upgrade my septic system to sewers if they were available. Most of the land is zoned for one acre per unit, but the properties on Ridge Road couldn't be built because the soil's so bad, it could never support a septic system. You couldn't get a permit for a septic system, so the one-acre classification basically condemns this property to sit and do nothing. If someone's interested in building, they're going to have to spend a great deal of money on infrastructure, sewer, water, upgrade all the fire hydrants, they need the higher density to be able to pay for these kinds of improvements. All of this adds value to all of the property in the area, and no one has to develop their property, and any development would mean higher property values, more money for the police, the city, fire response, more money for schools. Most of this land is going to continue to stay vacant lots, with no hope of upgrading to sewers or getting away from their septic systems. It just condemns the property to just sit there and become weeds. Nobody can afford to maintain it if they can't sell it or develop it or split it. Once again, I do support the increase in the density from four units per acre. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Rabel, followed by Michael Jenner.
Good evening again, Chuck Rabel. Let's remember, 30 years ago, when the, what's now the business park was agriculture land owned by the county, and the city called it blighted in order to make it a redevelopment area. And when you look at this island, it'll be an island forever unless the zoning gets changed to higher density. Also like to mention that there may even be an opportunity, if it's a higher density, for some affordable housing finally in Vista, that has been put off and put off and put off forever. The other thing I'd like to mention is you need to weigh the, the speakers by their influence in an annexation process. My understanding is they vote by the size of the property they have, okay? So some of these folks aren't, have got a small lot, but their, their votes outweighed by larger property owners, I believe, okay? Mr. Conley will correct me if I'm wrong. With that, go to the highest density you can, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Michael Jensen, followed by Rod Bradley.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter and council members. My name is Michael Jensen, and I'm the owner of 11 and a half acres, located at 1405 Ridge Road, which is in the West Sunset Island area. I have been before this council and the previous council many times before regarding this matter, and I bet you know by now I hate public speaking, so please bear with me. I want to thank you all for the countless meetings in conference rooms, your offices, in this chamber, and even out on the site. I am here tonight to urge you to adopt the previous council's recommendation of low-medium density for the entire West Sunset Island area, as is published in the draft 2030 plan. As you can see or will see from the maps and petition sheets, letters of support, which Mr. Conley has shared or will share, and phone logs, we have a huge number of property owners who support the low-medium-density designation for our area. The increase in density will allow the ability to get sewers to the area, which are desperately needed by many people. On my 11 and a half acres, we spent approximately $13,000 trying to add a bathroom to our 10-by-20-foot office, and could not get the property to perk. And it will allow, someday, and those, and the density will allow someday those with acreage to build if they desire. Once again, we urge the council Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ah, Rod Bradley, followed by Taylor, is it, Brune?
Mayor, council staff, my name's Rod Bradley. I'm with BHA, we're planning an engineering firm located in Carlsbad, five one one five Avenue to Encinas, representing some of the residents out in the Sunset Island area west. Real quick, you know, we're in favor of the four units per acre, the MLD designation, which is pointed out as five on the general plan, but most likely four. It might even be reduced more, given the topography. It's gently sloping, but there are some creeks and drainages that go through that need to be respected, that probably aren't respected in most of those ten thousand square foot lot subdivisions that John pointed out earlier versus a half acre. Of course, I didn't see any open space in the half acre subdivision either, which probably wouldn't happen because they're gonna be graded very similar. At any rate, keep in mind that you're gonna be approving a general plan that's gonna guide the city, it's gonna be the roadmap for the next thirty years. Thirty years ago, when you looked at this map, none of that was developed south of Sunset Island area. Melrose Drive didn't even make it to Shadow Ridge Drive, it was a dirt road. That's when I came to Vista in nineteen seventy-nine. Of course, I worked on Shadow Ridge, I worked on the industrial park, and I worked on many, many, many other projects in Vista. Could we see the map, John, that we have? You've seen this map before. Basically, the yellow shows all the properties that are in favor of the MLD designation, which is sixty-seven. There's some gray parcels there that are in the Sunset Island area that some of the people weren't able to contact, some of them are the people that were in opposition at the planning commission meeting. With respect to the general plan, the county of San Diego, as John pointed out, they got the four point three and the two DU's separated by ridge. They were going to approve four point three for the entire Sunset Island area, but staff, of course, now they've been doing the general plan for twelve years, pointed out that if you want to take it out for another two years and recirculate the EIR and do that, we could have four point three units on the rest of the Sunset Island area. So obviously, that got mixed. And I agree with John, I think this should be a cohesive land use designation, not necessarily split into two DU's. I should also point out that at the county public hearings, there was no opposition to four point three DU's per acre, none. I think the only reason why we got some opposition at the planning commission was because we tied the Sunset Island area west along with the road extensions, Sunset and Mar Vista. Planning commission voted four to one, and the reason why they voted four to one is they did, they got caught up in that, that frenzy of the road alignments, everybody's applauding and screaming and yelling in this chambers, it was, it was really ridiculous. And we didn't even have an opportunity to really present, like Joe presented about the septic systems and the problems he's having, and how much it takes to maintain three acres for a gentleman like that. At any rate, real quick, the reasons why you should support the MLD designation are as follows. We have the poor soil, poor perks, people can't add on to their homes, as you heard from, from Mike, you couldn't even add a bathroom on to his property.
You're wrapping up, right?
Right. Sewer is available with, through the city of Vista. The MLD designation will offer enough density that these folks can actually bring in these improvements that are needed, otherwise, they won't, it'll be like this thirty years from now, as you see it today. The area is surrounded by development, you can see that in that photo.
Hurry up.
The designation meets smart growth principles, more choices and opportunity for Vista residents, channels growth towards existing residential areas, which Vista does, locates growth near transportation corridors-
We're gonna get the hook out.
Locates growth near employment centers, near schools, and preserves open space.
Enough, enough already. Jeez, hey. We had a gong, we gong him. Okay, I'm Taylor, is it, is it Brune?
Obviously, I'm not Taylor.
No.
Ms. Taylor got sick, and, and she had to leave, but may I approach the mayor and, and give her some photos?
They're down there. Followed by Patricia Landeros.
I am reading a statement on behalf of Kathy and Jerry Sebby, who owned the property at one four six three Ridge Road, and they are right in the middle of Ridge Road between Mr. Keely's eight acres and several other acres, and then my eleven and a half acres, and as you see the photo of, the photo of their beautiful home, you'll understand the significance of their-
Who are you speaking on behalf of? I, I don't-
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm speaking on behalf of Jerry and Kathy Sebby, S-E-B-B-Y, one four six three Ridge Road.
Oh, I got, okay, so the name that was on here, the Taylor's name, she left, she was gonna read that, instead you're reading it, got it?
Yes, I'm sorry, and she became out.
That's okay.
Okay. Count, to physical city council, propose zoning for Western Sunset Island area. Our home is at one four six three Ridge Road in the Western Sunset Island area. We support zoning up to four dwellings per, units per acre in the Western Sunset Island area. Our property and the other properties in our neighborhood suffer from soil conditions that are not well-suited for septic systems. Restructuring of our zoning will allow a density that will support bringing sewer into the neighborhood, would provide an economic boost to the area, and eliminate eventual septic system failures. For that reason, we support the community's request for zoning of four units per acre and ask that you approve that. Respectfully to you, yours, Jerry and Kathy Sebby.
Thank you. Patricia Landeros, followed by Marco Dragovich.
My name is Patricia Landeros, and my family has owned the property at fifteen seventy-three Ridge Road for over thirty-five years now. For those of you wondering, yes, we are the flower people at the corner there. Through the years, the economy has taken a toll on our family business. We no longer can grow flowers that we used to due to the strict guidelines on pesticides, which mean we import a lot of our product. As you can see, that costs a lot of money. I won't even get into the water cost. My grandparents purchased the property when it was very rural. With time, there has been many homes built around, as you can see, shopping centers down the street, schools right around the corners, and let's not forget the courthouse, so close that we can walk to it. This doesn't give the, the feeling of country anymore. Although we are so emotionally attached to our family business and our property, we would like the opportunity to do something different in the future. My brother and I have thought about building our dream home on our family property. I'm sorry, I'm very emotional, my grandma passed away there. And we can't do that without the sewer system and, and so on, so anyways, I leave you with that. We are all in favor of having a higher density of four to five units per acre. Thank you.
Thank you. Marco?
Yes.
Okay, followed by James Anthony Wheeler.
Council, Mayor Ritter, good evening. My name is Marco Dragovich, and I'm owner of sixteen seventy-eight Sunset Drive. I'm also a commercial real estate broker with Leanne Associates. I've seen the city dramatically change over the last ten years. It's the business park area that could Korean Center and Vista Village improvements, and the Seo Santa Fe proposed plans. You know, we're, we've been moving forward and improving with the times, and I'm absolutely one hundred percent in favor of a density increase to four point three per acre. So I hope you, you go forth and hope you approve it.
Thank you. Okay, James Anthony Wheeler, followed by Jennifer West.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members. My name is James Anthony Wheeler. I'm currently the operations manager for fourteen oh five Ridge Road. I work for Mr. Jensen. We've been friends for almost twenty years, I've worked for him for almost that long, and I have a financial interest in this property. He talked about the, I actually worked the property, so it's true what they say about not draining. We have a septic on it at one time that completely failed, and it was bad, and we had to work around it and work around it. To get the bathroom, to even, the bathroom that never got built, thirteen thousand dollars that we could never even have a bathroom for our customers to come in there. We've had to dump granite on top of this property because the least bit of water, and it's so slick, you couldn't even walk on this property, it's, it's just unbelievable to take care of. We built a catch basin at the bottom to keep the water on this property. There was a, a nice elderly couple across the street that the water's coming down Ridge so bad, there's no drainage there, so it goes right into their property. We had to help them sandbag their property up just so they could get, make it through the winter, so. The property over there is, is really bad, but the islands could be a very, very beautiful project. I'm also, I'm for the four to five acre, excuse me, the units per acre. And I would just ask that, that the mayor and you guys would just approve that. Thank you so much for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you. I'm Boyd West.
Judy, Mr. Ritter? Can I say something?
Yeah.
If you ever want a palm tree moved from your area or somewhere else, call that man right there, he is the best.
Okay. Boyd West, followed by Jennifer West.
Oh, I'm Jennifer West.
Oh, you're Jennifer, okay, you can go. And then Boyd after you, how's that?
Jennifer West, one seven zero six Sunset Drive, we have four acres there. And I just wanted to bring to your attention that we have a lot of our neighbors who wanted to be here tonight and can't be, they're in their eighties, we're, happen to be surrounded by three homes full of octogenarians who wanted to send their thoughts here. We are in favor of the four to five acres, and we also have some drainage issues on our property. And I guess I just wanted to make sure that you know that, yay, I'm for it. We bought this property thirteen years ago, and this is our retirement. We sunk everything we have into it, and if you don't approve it, we're sunk, pretty much. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm Boyd West, followed by Jake Dragovich.
Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Boyd West, I reside at one seven zero six Sunset Drive, Vista, on three point seven acres. My property is in an area of the county which is known as the Sunset Islands. It's also in the city of Vista's sphere of influence. In nineteen ninety-eight, I received my first notice in the mail from the county of San Diego's Department of Planning and Land Use, the DPLU, concerning a workshop for the county's proposed general plan update, known as the GP twenty twenty. The county likewise notified every property owner in the Sunset Island. I exercised my right as a property owner, participated in that initial workshop, and those which occurred over the next thirteen years. I went door to door throughout the area known as the Sunset Island West and contacted my fellow property owners to get their opinions. I then submitted the names and addresses of those in favor of increased density to the DPLU. In the spirit of, excuse me, in the spirit of fairness, I also submitted the names and addresses of those who were against it, as well as those who were indifferent. After years of workshops, discussions, meetings, phone calls, and public hearings, it was agreed by the DPLU and the County Board of Supervisors that in the spirit of smart growth, the area where I live should be zoned for four point three dwelling units per acre, and it is currently zoned as such. The previous Vista City Council also agreed that increased density zoning is appropriate for the area, and voted to have it zoned MLD five for Vista's general plan update twenty thirty. To change the zoning now to anything less will actually be downzoning from what is currently in effect and cause substantial loss of equity in my property and that of my neighbors. Excuse me. On July nineteenth of this year, the Vista Planning Commission had a workshop concerning my area and another area on the east side of Melrose Drive known as the Sunset Island East. The agenda for that meeting also included the controversial Escondido Avenue and Cannon Road extensions. The crowd from the east side of Melrose Drive became agitated, noisy over that issue. It created the false impression that the Sunset Island West property owners did not want increased density. The planning commission did not take into account that half the people speaking against the higher density did not live in the Sunset West area, nor did it take into account that the six people who did speak for higher density represented the majority of Sunset Island West by virtue of a petition signed by property owners. If it had been a true workshop, the type given by the county for GP twenty twenty and the city's GP twenty thirty, we would have been gathered around tables with maps and documents. We could have discussed our points of view amongst ourselves and with planners and worked out our differences, or at least we could have better understood each other and agreed to disagree. The planners would have taken notes and contacted us later on items for which they did not have immediate answers, it could have been very productive. That workshop, however, was structured more like a hearing, kind of like today. We had no chance to interact, just three minutes to speak, and if another speaker followed one of us with inaccurate information, there was no way to correct it. We live in a democracy. It was the will of the majority of the voters when they elected the mayor and each of you city council members into office. The majority of Sunset Island West is in favor of increased density zoning within our area. I ask that each of you do for us what the voters did for you in the last election. Vote yes for the majority and give us MLD five zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jake Dragovich? Dragovich, did I say that right?
Dragovich?
Dragovich?
Mayor.
Okay. How about Chip Hasley?
Good evening. My name is Jake Dragovich. I reside in one six seven eight Sunset Drive in Vista. I moved to Sunset Island two thousand and two, built a house, and enjoyed living here the last nine years. I don't want to repeat what previous speakers already said. We know, we all, or most of us agree that we have a problem with sewer, we have a problem with natural gas, we don't have natural gas, we have propane tanks. But something I wanted to point, we need to think about our next generations and our kids. I have two sons, they finished UCLA, they came back to live with us in Vista. I would like to build a couple houses together with them. I want to have an option here. Not everybody needs to split the land, not everybody needs to build. I want to build a couple more houses, and that's my right, I believe. I want to leave an option to my boys, if they want to stay with us, to stay with us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm, just to add, I'm for four point three per acre. Thank you.
Thank you. Chip Hasley, followed by Nick, is it Millows?
Council members, Mayor Ritter, Chip Hasley with Park Grove Properties in San Diego. I'm the property representative that prepared the study that John showed regarding the house prices. He did a good job showing that slide, but it only really shows part of the story with the, the home prices there. The second part of that is the affordability issue. If you, if you use a one acre and a half acre lot size, it had an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar sale price for the one acre, and it had a six hundred and seventy three for the two acre. The four, four to the acre was what the consultant put in. When I read, ran the numbers, I used the five hundred and fifty price, which is reflective of the peak of the market, which is what was used by the consultant in cases one and two above. If you look at that, then the surplus to the city is ninety-one thousand dollars. Taking that, looking at the study and the affordability, in order to, to afford an eight hundred and forty thousand dollar house, you have to make two hundred, nearly two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year, and only one point six percent of Vista residents can afford that level of a house. If you drop to half acre, it takes nearly two hundred thousand dollars to qualify for a house, it's six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. If you do the quarter acre, which is what the property owners, a majority of the property owners wish to see on the property, it drops to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of income, and that jumps up to nearly twenty percent of the Vista residents. Still, eighty percent would be shut out of the market on a home price, but you'd still have twenty percent. The other issue on that is once you're in the house, how do you, how do you maintain it with the cost of water and services? I think former Mayor Vance even mentioned in the, the last hearing that he's on a half acre and wished he was on a quarter acre due to the rising costs of maintaining a house on a lot of that size. The other thing about the property area is that it, it's, it's an infill property, it's surrounded by development, you've got encroaching development on Oceanside all the way to the border of the city, you've got the, the view of the, the courthouse, you've got Melrose Drive there, so there's a lot of impacts affecting that area. And I think the housing in, in the moderate price range would be more in keeping with that area. It's a very nice area, but it's not a high-end residential area like you see in Warmlands, Vista Grande, some of these areas where you've got, in some cases, ocean view, you've got views of canyons, countryside there. It's a very nice area, but it's not a high-end residential area like you see in Warmlands, Vista Grande, some of these areas where you've got, in some cases, ocean view, you've got views of canyons, countryside there. The predominant view in this is rooftops and the courthouse tower. The other thing on the pricing is that the average price, assessed value of a house in that area at the present time is $295,000, according to the tax rolls. So, trying to put high-end housing in that area just doesn't seem to be an appropriate fit for, for that particular area. And finally, at the, at the density of a median blow, you would have enough critical mass to afford-
Are you wrapping up because your red light is on?
Okay, to pay for the infrastructure that would be required to, to develop that. So, it seems like a win-win-win for, for everyone. The city's going to make more revenue if the property annexes, the residents of Vista would have more affordable housing, and the property owners would get the density they're looking for. Thanks.
Thank you. Nick Millows followed by, I'll get my glasses on, can't read this one.
Nick Millows followed by, it's like Bryce? I'm can't remember if I can read this. It's 1679 Sunset. Is it Bryce or Boyce? Can you read that?
Oh, Thompson. Sorry. Okay, you're, you're next, after Nick.
Thanks. Thank you, good evening. My name is Nick Millows. I reside at 1358 Sunset Drive in the Sunset Island West area. My wife and I moved to Sunset Island because of the open space and the semi-rural character of the community. The space and character of this neighborhood is a rare treasure, only found in a few pockets of San Diego County Metro. I believe this, this special character is worth preserving for the benefit of the city of Vista eventually and the large majority of the residents of Sunset Island who decidedly spoke in favor of lower density during the last community planning meeting. I'm sorry to see that the same group of people isn't quite as well organized as those who favor additional development and don't have as strong a presence tonight. I do think that it is important that today's choice between one dwelling unit per acre, half acre, or quarter acre be considered relative to the land use designations in the San Diego County Plan that was responsible for managing development in this area over the last 20-plus years. In that county plan, properties were designated as either one unit per acre, two acres, or four acres. This county plan is the plan that has shaped the current character of Sunset Island, and this is the plan that I believe the next Vista Plan should be compared to when considering property density increases. In this context, there is only one sensible choice if we really value the character of this community, and that is a designation of rural residential. The designation of rural residential, or one dwelling unit per acre, still represents a significant yet reasonable increase in the density for the area. With this designation, all lots that are two acres or four acres can now double and quadruple in density respectively. This density increase is significant, but reasonable. The higher density designations of half acre and quarter acre lots being considered today represent a much more dramatic increase in the density and, which is a much less sensible from the standpoint of community character preservation. So, for the purpose of preserving the beauty and character of our community, I urge the council to designate the area as rural residential. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Tom, is it Tom, Thomas or Thompson? Thompson, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry you can't read my writing.
Ms. Mayor and council members, my name is Brian Thompson. About 20 years ago, I purchased property at 1679 Sunset Drive. It's a three and a half acre parcel. I developed a small horse ranch on it primarily to help my daughter's career. She's a nationally-known saddle-bred rider and trainer. And that was the only way she could develop some kind of a, a business and reputation is to have her own place. So, she used my place. My plan, my plan was to, to manage the facility for, you know, several years and then subdivide it into at least five parcels and build a home for myself, a new home for myself and for my three children and my, my daughter-in-law. The only way I can, that's feasible to do for me at this particular time in my life. I'm 72 years old, I want to retire. I'm just too old to manage the business anymore. And my wife's ending up having to do it, she doesn't like horses. So, anyway, I ask you as a council to, to vote yes on this zone changing to R4. My lot is, the topography on the lot is such that I'd be lucky to get five, five homes on the property even if it is changed to 4.3 density. So, I ask for your vote and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Hughes followed by Angela Barnback?
Mayor, council members, thank you for your time. I'm in support of higher density for this property. All of my talking points have been covered, the sewer, the increased property values, things like that. I won't waste your time with that, other than to say we are on our third sewer system in this property, a seafail with a heavy clay soil, so I'd like to see sewer brought into the area. This property, the only new I can bring is my personal experience. This property's been in my family for four generations. My grandfather moved from San Diego to Vista for this rural atmosphere. My father fought against the expansion of Melrose. It was a dead end, a small dirt road. They signed petitions, they came to the city, they tried to stop this progress. The, I was at the last planning commission meeting and one of the commissioners voted against higher density, and he said that if someone bought the property, they should have the comfort of knowing it would stay the same zoning as when they purchased it. If that were true, I wouldn't be here right now, Melrose would not be there. Our property at 1325 Sunset Drive, I did have two acres, but they're basically two acres of weeds. I sold one of the acres off. I couldn't, it didn't make any sense. He really, VID encourages you not to use water, so we sold one acre. The, oh, as far as rural atmosphere with the traffic on Melrose, I lived there, my children lived there, my grandfather, father, I have experience with the area. The air quality's not there. It's just so noisy with all that traffic. I moved, I did move to like, like Mr. Conley showed pictures of San Clemente area, we, our family moved. We had to get out of there and move to a rural area. This area is no longer rural. It's, if anything, I would like to see higher density along the Melrose corridor. When I lived there, I used to walk to the McDonald's and one walk away with my kids. That's not a country atmosphere. I can just say I couldn't support higher density more. I actually, if I had my way, I'd rather build apartments, mobile storage units, something of that atmosphere if I had my choice, at least along the Melrose corridor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Angela, is it Barnback? Followed by Patrick Keely. We don't, we have three left.
And if my mother could also be recognized after me, there weren't enough flyers out there for us to individually put our names on them. She would also like to be recognized after me. Okay, thank you. Mayor and council members, I have been at the house at 1520 Melrose Way for my whole entire life. I understand that sometimes we do have issues with our properties being in a rural area. I understand that we have also been encroached by the city, but at the same time, we do have a wonderful little jewel right there. This is our peace. This is our area. We've had a couple of developments, some larger ones as well, that are right there, but at the same time, we choose to continue to live there, and we will continue to live there for quite some time. As far as I've heard with the people needing lower-income type of housing, they have that in a lot of different places in Vista. Beyond that, the, the reorganization of putting so many different properties in this one area is really going to hamper safety. My husband was in a serious accident. We live at a house that has the, the low speed limit sign right there, and with all of the traffic that continues to go through that area, he was in our trailer just fixing some things, and somebody had crashed into him going 50 miles an hour. He has continued to have serious medical issues because of that, but in reality, it's the density coming into that area, and not too many people know about it. And right now, the safety part is a big critical issue. The noise is a huge issue. The fact that we do have a lot of, still a lot of natural setting, a lot of, a lot of animals that are still there naturally, those will be lost too. We have a lot of hawks' nests that have been there probably as long as I've been there, at least 30, 50 years. So, I really wish that the council would consider a lower-density model at least, half-acre parcels, that's what we are, and that would preserve the, the area very well, in my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Patrick Keely, followed by Bob Demetliya?
Good evening, Patrick Keely. I'm the owner of 1559 on Ridge Road, eight acres. I've owned this property for the last about six years. I've tried to rent it out a couple of times to different guys who are in the agricultural business in the area, and three different tenants have left it because of the cost of water, and also we're dealing with deceptive issue because I had, I have rental property on it, there's two properties that I rent, and with, when it's pretty busy agricultural-wise, you have to pump deceptics twice a year. So, that was my experience for the last couple of years. For the last two years, I haven't rented it out at all. All we've done is cut the weeds. And, so I believe that the 4.3 lots per acre makes financial sense for all the property owners. I believe the 10,000 square foot lots are suitable size and affordable for the local residents if we want to develop it in the future. The higher density makes sense for development costs and for more affordable housing for the local residents. And it also makes sense for the city regarding collecting fees, school fees, and city fees. So, I ask you to give me and the other property owners who live in the area a chance for the future to have the ability to develop our properties for our families and for the next generation. So, I am in favor of the 4.3. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Demetliya? And you are the last speaker.
Oh, boy, thank you.
Oh, wait. Okay. Unless somebody else wants to speak.
Hello, my name is Bob Demetliya. I live at 1541 Sunset Drive. We own a little mom-and-pop tropical nursery there with animals, very important, okay? Last meeting, I was attended here with the city council members, I mean with the city planners, there was a couple precedents and sets. One of them was that they were going to stay one acre minimums over there on the west side, okay? The other thing was that you were not going to widen the road from Cannon to Mar Vista, okay? Soon as we crossed the road over to Melrose, it seemed like all hell's going to break loose. I know I'm in a sort of the minority tonight of what the property owners want to do with their property, but I got a feeling, and then two previous statements are going to support that. One of them, there's no sewer on the west side. There's about three or four property owners that are main drivers of this issue that are needing this 4.3 to maximize profits, help you guys build the sewer system and everything else. I feel as property owners have been there 35 years, I'm getting held hostage of people I can't vote for that are going to determine my determination of life in three minutes I have to speak for here, okay? We need sewer there. I think 70, 80% of these issues would go away if sewer was put in. People want possibilities, they can't add a bedroom on, they can't put, get their land the perk. Sewer is the issue. If this is the case, if you folks pass this tonight, the way it is set at 4.3 acres, I mean 4, 4.3 houses per acre, what did you just tell those people in the July meeting of the city planners? Because the traffic all heading south to San Marcos, guess what? The shortcuts are through Sunset Drive, and you're going to be adding what? Mueller across the street on 16 acres. That is 64 homes across the street from me, at 2.2 cars per family. Heading, if they want to head to San Marcos, they're going to go down Sunset, the Mar Vista, and head out that way. Have you ever tried to get off of Emerald going on the freeway there about four o'clock, heading down towards 78 the other direction? Just the traffic impact is going to be insane. Also, the issue is just what vision do you have for Vista anymore? When I first moved here 35 years ago, as your flag states right behind you, there's flowers on it, that's agriculture zoning. You've had people there that's been third, fourth-generation plant growers. One gentleman back here said it was that this, the ground is in poor condition for agriculture. It's the climate, my friends. If you know what you're doing with the ground, you can produce-
Sir, could you wrap up? Could you wrap up because your light's on?
Oh, my light's on already? Very good.
Yeah, sorry.
And also, again, your vision for Vista, I'm against it, that I know I'm in the minority, we need sewer, you held us hostage for people, and also, we can't vote for you people, and yet you're going to determine our, determine our destiny? Wrong, sorry.
Thank you. Do you need a break before we go on? Anybody?
No.
No, no, no? We all okay? Okay. Did somebody? Do you want one? Councilor Gronk, we'd like to take a break for just, just for five minutes, so make it quick, okay, guys?
Sure, sure. I can use it.
Oh, we have one more speaker, wait. Who's that? Okay, will you, will you wait until we come back in five minutes? Oh, you ran out of speaker slips? Oh, okay. You, you can speak when we come back, everybody? Five minutes. I'm going to watch the- Okay, can I have everybody back? Where's my council members? Five minutes is up. Oh, we're at the end. Got it. Oh, 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 this year? This year. The Gronky one? No. Oh, yes, perfect. That was your job, I didn't say it. Councilmember Lopez, where are you? Frank? Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order and we have one more speaker. Oh, but I don't have the name. Come up here and you have three minutes if you give your name and your address there. Sorry, there were no speaker slips, we ran out.
Eve Bombad, fifteen twenty Melrose Way. I lived there since nineteen seventy-seven. I raised my two children there and I just love it. I love my area and I was always very grateful and fortunate. However, when Mar Sopa came in and all the housing development there, I just want you to know the traffic's been horrendous. Maybe all day long, I would see maybe three cars drive by on Melrose Way. Now I see three cars every second, it seems. They're just really, it's just busy, it's just crazy busy. And the traffic on Melrose Drive between three thirty and five is just bumper to bumper. So it's just, to make you guys aware, if you increase people, all these things are going to be increased, not even to mention the schools are overcrowded. And it's just, it's insane, it's insane now, but it's going to get way worse. And the crime, and we have a lot of wildlife in my area, there's a lot of little streams and rivers and birds and it's just beautiful. And that's probably all destroyed. So I'm for rural and the heck with everybody that wants to make money. I mean, this is, we're in heaven. And we thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? If you give your name and your address, please.
My name is Meredith Oliver. I live at fifteen thirty-two Melrose Way and my husband and I have lived there for thirty-seven years. We raised our kids there, it's a second home to our grandchildren. And we were at the July meeting of the Planning Commission and it wasn't a circus atmosphere to us, it was people who were passionate about the neighborhood that we live in and many, many of those people have lived there for thirty and forty years. And we, like Eve said, we love the area. And there are people with horses in my neighborhood. I wake up in the morning, I hear roosters in my neighborhood, so there is definitely a semi-rural atmosphere about it. I'm sorry, I got nervous and forgot everything I wanted to say.
Okay, don't be nervous.
Okay. Well, I guess I just want to say that we represent a large number of people that really want the area to remain kind of our little bit of country in the city. I mean, yes, we do have stores and things right nearby and it's wonderful, we have quiet of the country because we do have, you wake up on Sunday morning and you hear the birds. It's very nice. But yes, we can go just a short distance to conveniences. It makes it all that much better. People buy in our neighborhood because of those reasons, because they want that little bit of semi-rural atmosphere with all the conveniences. So, I guess that's all.
Okay, thank you. I think that should be all the speakers at this point. So, where's my council? Anybody want to speak? Oh, have one more?
Mayor, Council, I'm Robert Reed. I live at sixteen thirty Ridge Road. And I would say that the people that last time pressed for low-density zoning thought that the Planning Commission had done their job, that we wouldn't encounter this bushwhacking that has taken place on the higher densities. And something that hasn't really been discussed tonight, and as I recall, John Conley said last time that with increased density, the traffic on Sunset would go from something up to seventeen thousand trips a day. And Sunset is a very, very dangerous street. There have been all too many accidents at Ridge Road and Sunset. And as far as sewers, I think everybody in my situation would like to have a sewer. But for me to go onto a sewer right now would probably cost me eighty to a hundred thousand dollars. And that means I have to go down to the end of my property and then over to Oceanside. My septic works well, it's just my wife and I, so I'm certainly for the lower-density situation. But I think that the panel should consider the traffic situation that will occur if you go to a higher density, especially four point three residences per acre. It's just not practical. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now, anyone else? Okay, forever hold your peace. Okay, back to the council now. So, Councilmember Lopez, please.
Thank you, Mayor Ritter. I did own property off of Melrose years ago and I made the big mistake of grading it and when I graded that property at that time, I lost my certificate to build a home on it because I graded too much of the property off of it. I was trying to create more land and I made a mistake. So what happened is I was never able to build a home on that property. And so finally, finally the city came, brought the city, the sewer up and I was able to sell the property to a gentleman and he built a home on it. But during the time I was there, I did run into a lot of problems with the neighbors, not me personally, but I seen that a lot of them had sewer problems, tremendous amount of sewer problems up there. The area is right in the center of Oceanside and Shadow Ridge and our community. And it's an area that, I mean, I don't live in a castle myself, but some of the homes in that area, you know, that, in the area, needs to be redone. And maybe this is an opportunity for that. But when you look at that, the people who are against this, when you look at the, let's say it goes through tonight, be part of looking at how you develop that area. There's an area in San Marcos that has kind of a rural country look to it. What it is, is that it has a rolled curb and then it has landscaping, then it has a split rail fencing, then it has a granite walkway all through the project. Those are the type of things that people who are against this can get involved and say, hey, this is what we want, we want that atmosphere here in this area. The higher density, when you look at that property, I have built before and I have done a lot of grading when I worked for other people. And one of the things that I've realized there is that, and correct me if I'm right or if I'm wrong, Mr. Conley, when you have a piece of property with a topo like that, with your hills and your valleys, you don't exactly get four units per acre, is that correct?
Generally, yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So what happens, even though you go the four units, what happens is that you have, the four units would be on a flat land, period. You might get it, but you still won't go because thirty percent of it roughly is for roads and curb and gutter, correct, Mr. Conley, roughly?
Typically.
So, so what happens is that on the flat area, you might get it, but when you, because of the topo on that whole area, you're going to find lots that are quarter acre, half acre and in between. So it won't be a massive homes in that area. So, you need sewer, you need the gas up there. Those roads up there with the clay that you have there creates a problem for your sewer. When they develop that, Mr. Conley, will they be widening those streets somewhat a little bit? Or have to redo those streets? Whoever develops?
Our development code requires that you improve the frontage of your property, the half-street when you develop, so there would not be a comprehensive development or expansion of the streets out there unless it was initiated by the public agency, most likely.
So when they do the electric, it'll all be underground?
For any new development, that's correct.
Okay. Through, with LAVCO, how long does it take LAVCO to make a decision before you can actually put, start developing it?
The process requires an applicant to go through the city first, which can take anywhere from three months to a couple of years, depending on the complexity of it. And then it goes to LAVCO, which is typically a three to six month process.
Three to six months. So you're looking at two to three years before this thing could even get close to it and that's pushing it, correct?
That's probably a realistic estimate, yes.
Okay. So we're looking at the way the economy, the way the housing is right now, it can be ten to fifteen years before they put any homes on that? Yes or no?
Sure.
So, even though I've had, I've not lived there, but I had property there, I feel that the area warrants the higher density there and tonight I will be supporting that. Thank you.
Councilmember Gronk?
Couple of questions of staff. First of all, for those people with larger lots, say ten acres or whatever, and we designate four units per acre, can they do lot averaging?
We do have an allowance in our code that allows for lot averaging, to set open space areas aside and provide smaller lots in specified areas of the property.
So we would have clusters then?
Our code does allow for that.
Okay, okay. The other thing is just deals with sewer. I've heard of sewer over and over again tonight, but if we go with a half acre minimum, they'll still get sewer?
It would still require sewer, correct?
Sure, thank you so much. So that kind of negates that argument. I'm going to go back to the same argument I used last time because I sat on another council and I voted against the quarter acre, or the, yeah, quarter acre lots. And there's several reasons for that. As was brought up tonight and as been the problem with Vista for the ten years I've been in the council, is there's a bunch of affordable housing in Vista. And we don't need any more affordable housing in Vista. There is another project on the other side of town, we'll call the Quanah Project, which proposes a half acre lots and it's an attractive proposal. And I know a number of the people up sitting on the stairs were excited about that possibility. And I hope they're excited about a vision for this particular area that could be just as attractive. I won't speak of traffic because traffic will definitely be an issue if we go to quarter acre lots. I won't speak of the higher density and the cost that this city will have to bear if we go in that direction because I'm not overly optimistic that we're going to be able to sell houses for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars and that size a lot. I'd like to think that could be the case, but my stars read that the economy's going to stay pretty low and I think we're reaching a new reality about home prices. So I would say that if staff recommends that we go with a half acre because it's the best for our citizens, then I have to agree with that. I can't foresee those house prices that were portrayed by the developer. The other thing I want to say tonight too, is I heard some people speak from their heart and I heard some people speak from their pocketbook. And that makes a big difference in my decision-making.
Councilor Mirberta Maguilera?
Thank you. I've lived in Vista all my life and I do remember that area being very rural. I remember their... I remember horses on Melrose Way, I know there's some still there, but right where the school is at today. So a lot has changed, and I wish you could all go back to that, but reality is that we're not. One of the mistakes I feel that our city has, had made many years ago, long before any of these council people were here, is that we did have a no-growth attitude. And with that, we didn't stop growth, it kept coming, it just wasn't controlled. And we weren't able to stop the traffic or control the traffic. And I understand the issues out in that area. I mean, I drive throughout this city all the time. And one of the reasons we have some of the traffic issues that we have is because of the uncontrolled growth. The growth is going to happen. People are going to want to sell their property and, and develop what they can. And I think that if we go ahead and allow for people to have a little bit higher density, they can afford, and I think that's one of the things that you're probably missing on this argument, is that if you don't have a little bit higher density, you can't afford to do the sewer and all that, you know, the infrastructure improvements. You can't do roads. If you're going to build one house on two acres, you can't do the road improvements. Alls we're going to do is collect a few fees as a city and wait twenty years to widen that road, and if sidewalks are intended for that area, we're going to wait twenty years for those sidewalks. If you look around Vista, we have many areas, particularly on the outskirts of Vista, where we're waiting to collect fees, more fees, so that we can build sidewalks where our kids can get to schools. And the reason for that is because growth was stunted decades ago. We need to accept that North County is going to grow, but we want to have control over it and make sure that the traffic issues aren't there, and that we can put the, the proper controls into it. The soil issue is something I hadn't even thought about. I understand a little bit about the perking and all that, it's just something I wasn't aware of, and I'm glad that was brought up today. I have received so many emails, phone calls, from people in support of this. I was really surprised that, at the, at the Planning Commission, that it went the other way. And I really do feel for the Planning Commission because I've chaired the Planning Commission for a couple of different years. And I really do hate when things go to City Council and they get appealed and they get overturned. So I, I, I do feel for, for council, and I do feel for the people that showed up for that, and I'm sorry that all those people weren't here tonight. I would have loved to hear, you know, their opinions as well. But at this point, I am in favor of, of course, for those people that are out there growing, I encourage you to continue to do that. If you can afford to continue on, more power to you. And that's not something I'm interested in changing for you, in changing your lives. But for those of you who are looking to potentially develop their property, or have their families move on to their property, or add on to their existing properties, I'm here to support you on that. So I will support this.
Councilmember Coles?
Thank you. My con. You know, I've really had a, a change of, of heart in reviewing this project and the proposal before us because I've been skeptical of the proponents of increasing the density in the area there. And after touring the area and looking at some of the, the practical, realistic problems that that area faces, many of which were pointed out to us tonight, the, the nature of the soil, the clay soil, the, the lack of affordable irrigation for the, the farming that was so successful there in the past, that's drying up. The, the fact that it's, it is an island, I mean, it's surrounded by commerce, it's surrounded by access to, to, to roadways, it's shopping areas and that sort of thing. Unlike, you know, hopscotching over to an area very remote on the, the, the north end of town, this kind of allows development where people have ready access to, to jobs, to schools, to shopping, without having to, to drive extensively, without having to congest other, other roadways. It's also my assumption that in the event development were to occur or to be applied for in the area, that, that we will be in a position to demand mitigation for the increased traffic, for the increased sewers and the, the things that are going to be needed to, to allow development in the area. And it's, I mean, it doesn't pencil out to, to add the expensive sewer system for one house per acre or two houses per acre. It just doesn't pencil out. You, it, it, these people are, are going to, to be forever dependent upon septic systems that clog up. And, you know, I've, I, I saw examples of it. I, I think it's a very real problem that this might provide a, a solution with good I, I use Shadow Ridge as an example. That was a wonderfully planned community. It's much denser than this, and yet there's not traffic congestion there. Things flow smoothly, there's quick and easy access to commerce, to roadways, and, you know, the neighborhoods are, are quiet and well-maintained. And I think that some of this area could be developed in that way as well. Those people who want to preserve their, their larger acreage, this doesn't prohibit that from happening. People don't have to subdivide their, their, their lots. They can keep the, the acreage and the nature of, of their surroundings as they wish. But it does allow people to grow out of what has become kind of an isolated island in the middle of, of a, a very thriving area. And as far as schools go, I think the Vista School District would love to have some more kids move in. They've had to close two schools, and they've, because of people moving out of the area and the, the lack of, of students in the, in the district, they could, they could easily accommodate two to three thousand more students without, without any problem. So I, I respect our, our planning department. John Conley, I respect you a lot. I've talked to you about this, and ninety-nine percent of the time, I'm going to support you with whatever you recommend. But I think seeing firsthand some of the unique, th, this is not something you can just look at a map. You have to drive through it. You have to kind of walk around in it a little bit and, and see what the nature of that, of this area is. And so, so I'm going to support the, the higher-density proposal that's before us.
I don't have any more speakers, then I won't repeat myself because I, I actually agree, I agree with all of you, except for Councilmember Brownkey. Sorry. So I would look for a motion from out there if you'd like to.
Before you have a motion, is the question in order?
No, I don't, no, it's not. Unless you want to listen to this question.
No.
Is that yes or no?
I just want to make a motion.
Okay. Make your motion. And does that have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Have a motion, a second. Do you want to, you want to listen to his question? Not really? Okay. Sorry. Please vote.
So the motion is to support the land designation of four.
Well, you made the motion, but you didn't say what it was.
Well, it got cut off, so.
Okay, sorry. Finish it.
The motion is to support previous, I guess, designation for this property, or this area of the four point three dwelling units per acre. It was adopted back in October two thousand and ten, right? So that's, that's the motion.
Okay. And do I have the second? The second. Second by Councilmember Lopez. Okay. Okay, that motion passes four to one. And one other thing, Mr. Conley, before you leave, I think somebody has a birthday today. Could it be you? Happy birthday from all of us. Any others suspended here tonight? No dinner, no nothing? Okay. The next issue on our... No. No, we don't, that's the... Okay. I, we, we, our meeting's not over, we have, we have another... If you'd like to all step outside and talk, maybe? That'd be great. Okay, the, our next... Our next item, D three, is our Project Area Committee. Do you want to hear a, do you have a report to give us? Just a, a brief report?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm John Meyer. I'm the interim redevelopment director, and providing the staff report tonight will be Jeff Zinner, our redevelopment and housing manager.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. The redevelopment, the Vista Redevelopment Project Area Committee was formed in two thousand and eight pursuant to California redevelopment law in connection with the Fourth Amendment to the redevelopment plan. The law required that the PAC operate from its creation through the period of plan adoption or amendment, and for three additional years, at which time it would expire if no further action were taken. The City Council may extend the term of the PAC for one year on an annual basis. The PAC's mandatory term is scheduled to end on October sixth, two thousand and eleven. The key statutory function of the PAC was to review and consider the plan amendment. On July twenty-first, two thousand and eight, the PAC completed this function with its recommendation that the City Council, with its recommendation to the City Council in favor of adoption of the plan amendment. Last week, at its September nineteenth meeting, the PAC voted five to one to request that the City Council extend the term of the PAC for one year. Mr. Brooks Kavanaugh, who's currently the chair, cast the dissenting vote. In addition, the PAC authorized Mr. Walter Blevins to submit a letter to the City Council supporting their recommendation, and I believe that that letter has been received and transmitted to the council. Although the PAC has provided valuable services to the city and the Community Development Commission for reasons detailed in the written staff report, staff recommends that the City Council allow the PAC to expire as of October sixth, two thousand and eleven, and acknowledge the members for their dedicated service. This concludes staff's presentation. We are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I think it was about thirty-five years ago, somewhere around there, when I helped bring redevelopment into the city of Vista. I was very involved, and during that time, we assembled, I think it was like thirty-five people, which was called the CAC, Advisory to Redevelopment. And what we did is that, and it was assigned by the council during that time, and we went out into the community, canvassed the entire community, and looked at the problems that we were going to have, and what we could do with redevelopment. And I believe I was on that committee for a little over two years or close to three years, and we came up with a priority list. And that priority list is still working today. The first thing on our priority list was widening of North Santa Fe, and that was number one. And they've gone through it pretty good, a lot of them, except for the Paseo Santa Fe. It was number four on the pri, on the priority list, but it's going today. And so, but the committee in itself served a great purpose for the city to look at what was really needed. We, we had residents, we had business people, you know, on that committee. And when it was all said and done, the committee did its purpose and served its purpose. But it was time, after two years, that it was over with, it was over with. This committee that we had, have here was, was created for the expansion of redevelopment, and it's over with. And so I believe that, that it should be over with because it, it's time. You know, they, they've served the purpose, and I want to thank the people that were on that committee, who, who really put a lot of input in it and had their meetings, and I want to thank them for the time that they spent because they surely didn't get paid for their time. So thank you, committee. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Brownkey?
This commi, this committee that you have, you've been working with for several years, and during that time, you came up with several recommendations. Have you implemented some of those recommendations that they came up with?
I will defer to Mr. Zinner to give you an explanation of that.
Okay.
Are you done?
Yeah, Mr... In answer to your question, in answer to your question, the PAC has provided recommendations on several items, several issues, in addition to the recommendation that they made regarding the plan amendment. They also have provided, they also have provided input on the replacement housing plan for the Riviera Motel, which came before you. They've provided input regarding the five-year implementation plan, which came before you about two years ago. They've taken action regarding the governor's proposal to eliminate redevelopment opposing that, and they spent quite a bit of time providing input on the redevelopment capital improvements program, and they were responsible for adding various projects to that list and, and in being, making sure that we've moved forward on certain projects.
So we're talking about projects that have been in place and projects for the future, too?
Yes. I mean, that, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I have to agree with Mr., Mr. Lopez on this one, and in fact, unless there's other council members, I'd go ahead and make a recommendation, this is not a public hearing, is it? For staff recommendation, recognizing that we will close this commission down.
I have a question, a second. Does anyone else want to speak? Marcia, did you want to speak?
I'd like to say something.
I have one speaker. Do you want to hear Marcia? Yeah, just one. Marcia Holland.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marcia Holland. I live on Bel Air Drive West, and I've been on the PAC, this version of the PAC since its inception. I want to thank the council for allowing us to be part of the city planning, and I want to voice, although I was not there at the meeting on the night of this past meeting, I do want to remind the council and the redevelopment commission that there are many passionate people on the PAC who need to find a place in the other planning and city functions, the other committees and, and whatever they, I can't think of their word right now. But there are passionate people that need to be involved continually in the functions of the city, especially as it relates to safety, and especially as it relates to the, the townsite areas, the areas within central Vista. There's great concern there, and they have found very great need for that. So even though the PAC as a redevelopment group may, may discontinue after this point in time, I encourage you to reach out to these people who have joined them and have such great ideas for the city of Vista. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have a question of her? Marcia?
I would just like to say thank you for your time and for your passion, and, and for those that you spoke about, we do have other commissions, and we would love to have them apply for those.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Councilmember Lopez, did you want to speak again?
I was going to say what Mr. Brownkey said. There is other commissions, and I know a lot of the folks there that are on that, were on that PAC, and, and there is other commissions that we'd love to have them on. Thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
I have Patrick Johnson's name on here. Oh. I have Patrick Johnson as a speaker.
That would be me. So I know I may look like him, but I really am myself. I didn't know, a couple of the council members had asked about improvements, and I know that Mr. Zinner had listed a number of those, but council had also asked in the past about investment in the, in the townsite area, which is, this was a big part of, even though the overlay district was comprehensive throughout the entire city. And I can, I don't... Don't have that for an overhead, but we could... Or do we? Do you have that listed for an overhead? Oh, okay. Well, very efficient deputy city clerk, Ms. Zimmerman, does have that as an overhead. I know it's been a long evening, but we'd like to show that the investment that we have had in the area is over $2 million, and it's really tiny up there. Oh, there, up on this big screen. Oh, she's trying to do like her iPad.
I'm trying to do like the iPad.
She's trying to make it larger.
Make it bigger. It's not working.
That's good. But up on the big screen, you can probably see that bottom number there, the total investment.
I can't see it.
Without a T.
Two point six. Two point six million?
That's okay. Two million, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand. And that doesn't include the Maryland Drive sidewalks, the area serving Maryland Elementary and Washington Middle Schools, which is about another 1.7 million on that project. So really, have about four and a half million dollars comprehensively in the area for streets and sidewalks and curb and gutter, and a lot of safe routes to school, and homeless shelters, and a variety of other investments through CDBG money and redevelopment monies in those areas. So, please don't be dissuaded that even though we've had to pull back without any redevelopment capital improvement monies right now, available, and probably for a few years, because of what the state has done, we have put a lot of investment in there, and we still have a long ways to go. But we have put a lot of money in there, we will continue to do so whenever we have any more money available.
Okay. Mayor Portemagulera.
Yeah, I just want to apologize to staff, because I was the one that asked for this information. Because I was concerned, I want to make sure that we are investing in that part of town, since I drive through it every day. But, you know, it is, it's an important part of our town, and I think we have made a lot of improvements, particularly in the townsite area. California Street, I mean, we've put sidewalks. We have some of the newest sidewalks there, we've got the Luz Duran Park. We're going to be putting in the sports park, or we're not, but the Vista Unified School District's going to be putting in the sports park with the grant money that we're going to be receiving, right there in the middle of townsite. So I know we've used a lot of our resources in this area, and I'm happy to see that, so... Thank you.
Do we have... Do I have a motion? Did I get a motion already? A second already?
Motion, there, a second, yes.
Okay. If there's no other discussion then...
I'll second it, then.
Oh, there's not, okay, so... Mayor Portemagulera seconded it. So, we'll vote, please. Motion passes unanimously. So where are we? Are we... I don't have... I've lost my agenda. Hold on.
We're done.
We're done? Well, no, we're not quite done. We have a couple little things. We're almost done, but not quite. We have Amber, we have two speakers. I know Amber's waited this long. We have two speakers, one is... I can't read this exactly, hold on. It looks like E. Michelle Paul? Oh, okay. And then followed by Amber Starbuck. Sorry, Amber. Had to wait this whole... Picked a long meeting.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter and council members. My name is E. Michelle Paul, and I am the founder of a new volunteer organization that's here in Vista. A little bit about myself. My name is Michelle, I'm a retired Marine and a disabled OIF vet. I'm a local poet and the founder and organizer of GIRL. GIRL is an acronym, and it stands for Gifted, Intelligent, Resilient, and Loving. I'm a little nervous.
Don't be nervous.
Okay. Like I said, it's a volunteer organization, and what we do is, we are a group of positive women role models, and we mentor children, young women between the ages of 12 and 24. The reason I started the organization is because the media and entertainment world has done major damage to our young women's self-esteem, image, awareness, and confidence. What we plan to do is breathe life back into their hearts and minds by empowering, encouraging, and educating young women. We've teamed up with the Boys and Girls Club of America to bring girls home here to Vista. And we're going to do that beginning in October, October two days a week, on Mondays and Wednesdays. The way that we plan on doing that is by focusing on learning how to lead like a woman, obtaining self-actualization, helping them to exhibit their gifts and talents, promoting education, and providing education on emotional and physical well-being. We are asking for backing and support through volunteers from the community here in Vista. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for waiting all that time. We appreciate you.
Good luck.
And what we will do is also make sure you're in touch with other volunteer organizations, so we'll assist with some of those contacts for you, too.
Okay, Amber.
Hi, honorable mayor, members of council, thank you for having me, Amber Starbuck with STGNE. And I'm just here to share with you this evening, and as you well know, the outage that we experienced on September 8th was the largest outage we've ever experienced in the history of our utility. It affected our entire 4,000 square mile territory and all 1.4 million customers, in addition to millions of customers in both Yuma and in... And pardon, Arizona Imperial and in Baja Norte. Unfortunately... Fortunately, our system sustained no significant damages, which is part of the reason why we were able to get some of the restoration work started within the first five hours. But the reason why I'm here this evening is to really thank you and all of your efforts and your emergency responders, because the collaboration and the communication that we held between the city of Vista and our other municipalities is really the reason why we were able to work so diligently and get the work done fast. So I'm really here this evening to thank you. I also wanted to just share with you briefly that we are part of the work that's being done at the federal and state level to determine what actually triggered the outage. We know it resulted, obviously, in Arizona, but we're waiting to find out some more information from both the federal and state officials that are doing the research to find out what exactly triggered it, so that we can avoid future instances along those lines. And so, as we find out more information, we'll make sure to brief you, if not through council, through email communications. But truly, I just wanted to just take a moment to thank you and all of your emergency responders, because it was truly a pleasure working with you. And as the months go on, we're going to be doing some additional work to figure out ways that we can communicate more effectively as well. I know that there were some issues with email and some issues with text messaging, so we'll be doing a lot of additional follow-up, so that we can refine our procedures even further. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for waiting so long to say that.
Oh, absolutely.
We appreciate that.
No, absolutely.
Councilmember Gronki wants to say something to you.
Yeah, just a couple things. I was... Fortunately, there was retirement that day, so I was down here at our EOC and saw the communications that went on, and I really thought that was an outstanding thing that occurred during, could potentially be a real dramatic and hazardous situation. So, thank you for coming today, and I like the way your hair is right now. It's an inside joke.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I think now we have to go to a closed session. I think we didn't come out of our closed session information. So, if we'd like to...
Thank you, Mayor Ritter, yes, and make the closed session report on item CS1, no action was taken. On item 2, City Manager Geltor delivered a letter to the city council, which I will now turn the floor over to her to explain that further.
Thank you, Mr. Zinner Attorney, and basically, my notification was for retirement. And after much consideration, I have decided to provide official notification of my retirement effective the end of 2011. And this, as I stated, was, the decision was extremely difficult. To retire is indeed hard, but a decision that each of us may make during our careers at some point in time, and a decision that's always made with very mixed emotions, especially after a span of 36 years of government service. I have strong ties with the city, I feel that we're a unique family unit, work well together professionally and personally. And in reflection, there are many accomplishments that I'm especially proud of as a 17-year Vista and city employee. However, I'm most proud of working with a strong team of elected officials, past and current, who passionately served and continue to serve Vista, working with committed professional employees who so well-built and maintain and continue to expertly serve the community. And working with a highly motivated and involved community that pulls together repeatedly to work for a better Vista. I've always been grateful for support, that when there are disagreements, the council has an amicable process about that, and it is always in the best interest of Vista. And I couldn't have asked for better working conditions and a better group of people to work with for my last job before I retire. So, thank you very much.
Oh, it's so sad. Rita's been the best city manager. She's been my only city manager, but you've been the best city manager. But, I mean, Rita's known everywhere as the best city manager, so it's going to be very sad to lose her. Councilmember Gronki.
I concur that it is a sad day. Ms. Geltor, Rita, we've been partners for about 11 years here, and I've learned so much from you, and I really want to thank you for that. I talked earlier about people speaking from their heart, and I don't think I've met a manager that has a big a heart as you do. And I know part of your decision is because of that. And I wish you the best of luck, and you take care of yourself.
With that, anybody else? Oh. I don't see anybody's name, but I guess I'll just go on the line, huh? Mayor Portemagulera, that's what I usually do, don't I? I know, I kind of got sidetracked here, okay. Mayor Portemagulera.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and piggyback that. I'm very sorry to hear you're leaving, especially since we just started working. Already have learned a lot from you. And really appreciate your support.
Councilmember Coles.
I don't know if I can become that emotional, but thank you for that show of support. I feel fortunate that I've been able to work with Rita for more than the few months I've been on the council, because we work closely as colleagues in our positions in the city in the past years. And her mark will certainly be left on the city now and for years to come. And I think our job as council now is to make the smoothest, best transition into the next era. And fortunately, we're in position to do that. We're a city that's well-managed, has a reputation of being well-managed, and I think we can work together to continue that tradition here. So, thank you so much, Rita.
Councilmember Lopez.
I think I'm going to wait until December to give my great speech. To Rita. Okay, I'll wait until December.
City Attorney, anything?
Well, I just want to echo the sentiments of those on the council, and what a privilege it's been to work with Rita since I came to Vista. It's been a great privilege, thank you.
Our deputy city clerk down there, are you still awake? Are you awake? No?
And Mayor, I do have one, we'll end on something that's, I think, very, very positive, and that is a press release information sheet that's hit the newspapers this evening. And it's exciting that there was an arrest of two taggers today. One is 14 years old with 67 counts of felony vandalism, equalling $29,044. The second one was a 26-year-old with 87 counts of felony vandalism, $37,824 damage, and that's what we'll be looking to recover. But the sheriff's department's done an excellent job in the last couple of weeks with several cases, and high-profile cases, and this is certainly one of them. But to... This was just released at 5 o'clock, so it will be in the papers. But this is good news that they've been captured, and it is wonderful that we'll look forward to trying to recoup that money, but at least they're off the street for right now and not doing any additional damage to our city.
Congratulations to our sheriff department, they're doing a great job. Do you have something, John? Your light's on.
I just wanted to mention something about Kevin Hamm, being in the San Diego Business Journal. Is he still here?
Is he still here? He head back for San Diego.
But, you know, I wanted to mention that he was recognized there and quoted, and, you know, the hard work that not only Kevin, but staff, has put into bringing in the new furniture store, Living Lifestyles? What is it?
Living Spaces.
Living Spaces, I'm sorry.
Grand opening, yeah.
Grand opening coming up. So I want to recognize staff and Kevin for that. But also the Vista Cares, you know, that Kevin organized, but also staff participated in. I think it was a very positive thing to go out and speak to the various business owners. I think we got a lot of positive feedback, got some good information and critique as well. From that, I've got a meeting with one of the business owners this Friday. I'm not sure what he wants to talk about, but I think the more we communicate, the better. So, thank you for all participating and helping in that.
And we're actually going to continue that, we're going to do some more businesses, too, so that's a great thing. So, anybody else? Are we ready to go home and go to bed?
Well, and I'm sorry, it was wonderful, because it was the entire council participating out there, and the businesses were so impressed, where they would say that they'd been in business in another city before, and had never seen anybody, and then all of a sudden, one of the businesses, I believe that Councilman Coles went to, and he says, "I've been, we're just opening our doors, we've been here three days, and I get a visit from a council member." It was very... It was very enlightening, but I think all of the council had similar experiences and very positive feedback from the businesses that they knocked on the doors of, and were very receptive and appreciative that you came and care about them.
With 800 businesses out there, I think we could do a few times, so we can get to all of the businesses out there, and in the downtown even, so, yeah. Any more? Okay, then.
One quick thing, I really... We've had some great events here lately. Last weekend, I volunteered to be in the dunk tank for the Boys and Girls Club.
Well, how was that?
The great thing, I got there, and they were filling the tank with a dribble of water. It didn't get full by the time... By the time it was my...
It was full by the time I got there.
Well, it wasn't for me, so I put in my time and stayed dry.
Sorry, I missed that, I would love to dunk both of you.
Many of you at the Tri-City Hospital 50th Anniversary at the Moonlight, which was a great event. And what a wonderful organization in our backyard, and that we're a part of. The Moonlight held its second annual golf tournament yesterday at Shatter Ridge. It was very successful, people had a lot of fun. I won't announce the fun of all the people, but some of our family here did extremely well. Patrick, thank you. And Patrick's team won third place, and other things as well.
He had a good day.
But the, I think by the end of the evening, they, I think, raised between $70,000 and $80,000 toward the foundation support of the Moonlight.
Wonderful. They actually announced this morning $90,000.
$90,000.
Which was, of course, as we all know, in large part due to Mr. Barter, who is a fabulous contributor.
And again, everybody's talking about Vista Cares, but that was really a neat experience, too. And I got to be with that guy, just moved in, hadn't been from Carlsbad. He was so excited to be in Vista. And so happy that we showed up, so, anyway. Great, great week.
It was a great week, so... Okay, so I'll see you all. When do I see you all? I don't know. Soon, we'll see you next time. We'll see y'all next time. So we're adjourned.
I have something to say.
Do you want me to unadorn us?
He didn't do the end of the night. Was that it?
That was it.
That was it, huh? I guessed out, well, I'm going to say something. This weekend was the Optimist Club, I mean, the... October, October.
Fest. It was Optimist Day, too.
And I was there, and...
I was there, too.
You were there for a while, and I think Mr. Gronki showed up with the crazy hat, but he was there, you know? I noticed you, you know? But I, you know, there's been a lot of people involved in putting that program on, and that event. And especially to Paul Eckert.
Are you there again?
Paul Eckert, I'm telling you, really is... Paul Eckert, I'm telling you, really is dedicated to those type of things. You had people like the Schumans. Schumans, they were there from the, to set up, they were there to knock it down the next day. People like that are in our community who really dedicate their time. Chuck Rabel was there from to set up to knock down. The whole, the entire event was quite an event, and there was plenty of food and plenty of other stuff, too, so it was a great, great show.
It was a great show, yeah. It was very fun. Okay, so now we're adjourned a second time. Oh, anybody else?
I said we're done.
Okay.
CG's not, though. She's going to come talk to Rita.